Okay. So Mayor, can you see the screen?
I have it.
Okay. So this is our general fund budget work session. I have called Danny, I haven't got an answer yet, so I'm gonna keep my phone kinda close by, so we can watch that. Before we actually kinda dig in, there's a few things that I think would be good for us to talk about. So tonight on our agenda, we have a public hearing for a credit card convenience fee. Jessica and I have talked, and I have put in the budget for $25,000 line item for revenues for that. So Jessica actually found out, fresh, hot off the press today, that there is a safety feature that we can put in place with our card terminals, and that too will save us some money. So, not only are we gonna knock down air charges with a convenience fee, but we're gonna be able to implement the safety feature, and it will also knock down some of our costs. It's a fraud safety feature?
Yeah, it's an extra feature that they offer, and we are with Drive Payments Act. You asked that question. And what it is, is we take a lot of our credit cards and bank cards over the phone. So these are not where we physically have the card in front of us. So that's a higher-risk transaction, someone giving us a number over the phone or online. So they charge us a higher fee for those transactions. I did not know this. So they have a feature to where it'll be an extra step when we take those payments, where we have to confirm their billing address as well. And once we start implementing that, that transaction fee will be less for those transactions, and that is gonna help our bottom line that much more. So it's a really good feature, and we are in the process of getting that set up right now.
Any idea, but estimate, how much difference does that make?
I don't, he didn't give me a percentage, but I can totally ask him, and I can get that back to you.
Okay, so another area that I have looked at is air garbage rates. I have some data on that. Okay. So we offer, I'm gonna talk commercial first. We offer dumpster services. We do not currently own the dumpsters, however, we will service the dumpsters of a commercial property, whether it be business, apartments, complexes, what have you. But we have two yard, four yard, six yard, and eight yard. And right now, so our current rates are $14, $21.50, $26, and $30 for our dumpsters. And what I would like to recommend is a dollar fifty a month increase. So that would then make your dumpster rates $15.50, $23.00, $27.50, and $31.50. And you are looking to gain $8,280 a year with the current pickups that we have now. So not a terrible increase, but it does help a little bit. And moving on down to commercial pickups. We have one pickup a week, two pickup a week, or five pickups a week. Your current rates are $19.50, $26.00, and $45.00. I'm also recommending to increase them a dollar fifty, which would be $21.00, $27.50, and $46.50. And judging by the current pickups that we charge for now, that is an additional $1,458.
So is this, we bought a new garbage truck, right?
We did.
$244,000. The, oh, hold on a minute. But, okay, it's got a 5.9 interest rate. So this is designed to offset the cost for having to refresh the garbage truck?
It would.
Is that the intent?
So there is something else that I would like to discuss after we go through this, that has to do with dumpsters. Is that okay, if I keep going for just a minute?
Yeah.
Okay. So residential customers is $14 a month, and I'm recommending that go to $15 a month, so one dollar a month increase. And then out of town is $26 a month, I'm recommending we go to $26 a month. And it, now, we have raised the dumpster fees about two years ago, but it has been, I think since 2018, since we raised residential. So that, that has been a little bit of time between there. So all in all, if we do these rates, we are set to receive $31,062. So, yes, this is absolutely able to go for it, our garbage truck, and we do try to get a new truck every five years. Something that has been brought to me as a possibility, like I have not necessarily budgeted for this per se, but this is, this will help us if we want to do this. So the town of Bluefield has a garbage program, and someone has kind of filled me in about it, that they actually purchased the dumpsters, and then rent them out to the customers, and then we also get the pickup fee from that also. So we would be getting a rental fee plus a dump fee. So if that's something that we wanna look into, we could try it with a few, see how it went. Air rates would obviously have to be competitive. Lust sanitation, I think, is the other big facility in the road here that has the dumpsters. But that's something that, I mean, would we be interested in? Yeah, maybe getting a handful of dumpsters, and trying that to see if there's money to be made, because they, they have told me that it will make money.
What's the cost?
It depends on the size.
Right.
So we-
We bought a four yard dumpster for the, was that, we were using different company?
Mm-hmm.
Keep company names clear. But we purchased a four yard dumpster, which ran off a spin area trash five days a week, you know, SBA used one time. So, you know, that gives you a feel for the size. But it was purchased two years ago for approximately $40,000 from a made in fact, local made in factory.
It looks like-
Can I go squirrel a little bit on this?
You can. Yeah, go ahead, yeah!
You first.
Yeah, potentially be something that we add to an incentive for new businesses coming in that, especially the restaurants, yeah, and incentive they could qualify for, and I know we're talking about, yeah, gaining revenue, but potentially have it as some sort of incentive where businesses could, yeah, get free dumpster removal for like a year or something of that nature, similar to what we do with the water for some businesses.
I mean, it's, it's an idea that we've never really explored before, so-
I assume we would have to do the same thing, where we receive the money and then-
Rebate it back.
Under some kind of agreement. That would have to be, would it have to be added into our EBITDA grant?
Um, so the utility one, I don't know that it was ran through IEDA.
The, the year time of the water room?
Yes.
No, it was not, it was, that was before the EBITDA grant got finalized.
So I think this is, if you would like to task the IEDA with that exam and have it on their EBITDA, that's, that's very doable.
Worth looking into.
Okay.
I just figured it should be something that, yeah, shows that we are a bit springling, we're trying to, you know, continue to work with businesses to alleviate some of that initial startup cost.
So what would you all be thinking as, you know, would we rebate the whole thing? Would we rebate a percentage? I know with the water, it was, um, they had to pay all of the water, and we rebated the sewer. So would you all want to rebate all the dumpster fee, or-
What if you do like a secondary? That's a declining-
Eighty sixty forty?
Yeah, but I would do the, if it was me, just off the top of my head, I would do the dumpster rental fee. If we purchased a dumpster, you know, purchased the dumpsters and went that way out, I would do a declining eighty sixty forty on the dumpster rental fee. Because the, the cost of us dumping, picking up, is kind of a fixed cost. I mean, we gotta send people out there to go get it.
Right.
So I don't necessarily see that that really helps us, but it is an incentive to let them rent the dumpster itself, in my opinion.
To me, having the government have a low rate beats the competitors, which is the private market, which wasn't enough incentive for me to switch over and say, hey, community municipalities doing this at a cheaper rate. Maybe there's economies of scales by having the truck and servicing the whole area. If we're looking at incentives, you know, maybe, maybe that's, maybe your incentive's already there by having low rates. I guess it's all good then.
Right. I mean, we could start by giving a lower rate, and then if we see that it's, you know, how it works, go expand that to a, to a rebate option.
Okay. So do you all have any comments about a rate increase for garbage?
I mean, with inflation, I just think it's, you're, you're talking about the lowest, or at the highest percentage of less than 10% increase. And with inflation, that was from two years ago, and not including the residential side. So just general inflation, the cost of doing business has gone up so much, it only makes sense to have to do this.
I also have some rate comparisons.
Can I expand on, on your idea of getting dumpsters? Have we ever looked into, like, trash pickup, container rental, like trash can rentals? Residential?
I haven't.
Cause I think that may help us, you know, I've talked several times about people not putting their trash in-
It was in, it was in the newsletter this time, too.
Was it?
Yep.
Well, I appreciate that. But, you know, if we were able to, it'd be hard to stock all that stuff and handle it, and it's a lot. But the revenue line possibly, it could incentivize folks to-
Think of the town?
Yeah.
I know that there are a lot of towns that make you use certain types of, you know, trash cans. It is the types that can be picked up-
Yeah, I was gonna say, most of that kind of those are the poor trucks. But we could, we could transfer to that kind of truck at some point, which would make things even better.
Right.
And less, less being done. Well, yeah, less mess, less a lot of things.
So I'm absolutely open to explore any of these. I just, I didn't know if you all would be real interested in even starting something like this, but it sounds like, it sounds like y'all might wanna talk some trash.
Well, like you said, you got the rates there, we're, you know, on the-
Townhouse is the very end one.
Yeah, on the lower end of that. And we gotta keep up our equipment, we wanna keep our town looking nice, and I think we're, we're figuring in on that.
So again, this is an increase of like $10,000. So if you all are open to us exploring, like you said, some incentives, or some rentals, or like dumpster rentals, or can rentals, we could get some prices and see if there's a program that we can follow to do this, and we'll see about implement that if you all would want me to.
You know, it's on my avenue or something. So they kinda have one of those pickup trucks.
They do, I have no idea what's $30. And that's residential. Okay.
While we're looking at rates, can we look at the, the business license rates? I've never really, maybe it's the financial?
Yeah, is there a particular one, like I was gonna go all up?
We can flip through. It's that's how we go where all the businesses have to pay their business license tax, and ask the question, you know, what am I getting for, for that? And my explanation always is, like, you have paper roads, and patients or your clients can come to your office, and they're, they're scraping the litter, and they're, you know, maintain as we can, right? But I did wanna look at the discrepancy between the different rates.
Okay.
And I've never really understood why these were set the way that they are. But because we had it discussed, I just wanted to take maybe just a quick timeout, look at the different rates, and just understand better why they are where they are. So there's your retail, so it's point oh two, right?
Two percent.
Point two-
Point two percent.
Yeah, point two percent.
Okay, and then financial, to the right?
And that's point two percent of what?
Grocery, grocery receipts, grocery receipts.
Yes. Okay, so financial is like 40 cents on the hundred, or, or 40 cents on the hundred?
Okay, and on this one, we, we have a line item there for, what is it called? It's the bank, ah, there's a banker's like-
Bank franchise?
Bank franchise. What's the difference between the financial, do the banks pay both of these?
No.
Okay.
Banks do not pay a business license, so banks pay the bank franchise. It is due on May 15th.
Okay.
And it's a percentage of their deposits.
So like annual deposits, or like, okay. Do you know what that percentage is?
So that's a, that's a, my certification, what falls into the financial fee hole category?
I just turned the machine. Hold on, I'll pull up the, uh, actually on the, at least on the renewals, there's not just scripters of like each business type.
What's the question?
So the banks don't pay the, the finance, they pay a bank franchise tax?
Yes.
And how does that compare to the financial?
Okay, so I say something wrong, so my bad. It's not their total deposits, it is their value of shares of stock, and it's 80 cents on the hundred. So that's what the bank franchise is.
So who falls into this?
Um, so financial is your-
So that says finance, real estate, professional services.
So your doctors, your attorneys, your- Analysts, chiropractors. Yeah. This is more like your business professionals, what I'll call here. So we talked about banks, they do not pay a business license because they pay the bank franchise. Insurance companies are also exempt, they do not pay any type of fee hole tax. But your-
Is that like state federal?
Yes. It's, it's in the code, it's Virginia code. Do we need to go back to retail and say, like, who falls into that, or is that pretty explanatory? Or- So your, your CBS food line, um, boutiques on main streets, your restaurants, that's all retail?
Okay.
Okay. We ready to move into the next one?
Excuse me, I'm just curious, I have, this isn't a public comment time, I know. Does that include like, uh, people who operate businesses out of their own? Does, is that included? I'm just curious.
So let's say you have, um, a mowing service, that's actually under contractor, or, or, or personal service.
Okay.
Which, whichever one you can look at.
I was thinking more about these people who do home businesses and sell products.
Home jewelry?
Yeah, I mean, it's big crafts. I'm just curious, I have no, uh, no alternative motive, I was just curious about it.
So, I guess depending on the type of, of business that it is.
Okay.
Um, if they sold like jewelry, it could go under retail.
Okay.
If they were setting up a barber shop in their house, that would be a, a personal service.
Sure. I think all of us would come and check the best-
They were for your hair, like, brush, mints, and polish.
Yeah, there's the, there's a repair category.
Thank you, it's all right.
So would your real estate professionals that have a medical company, would they fall under this category? So your Century 21s, your-
Yes.
Whatever other real estate companies.
They fall under that? So how do you know, like, I start a business, I come to the town, you direct me which one, tell you what my business is, you tell me what town I'm in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
That's up here.
That's really interesting.
So contractor? I think that Lebanon has a flat fee, that's why you're seeing it's $30. And the rest of them are percentages. So we're, we're at 15, seven percent, so we're at 15 cents on the dollar. Um, and your contractor could be those folks that do plumbing, electrical, mowing, landscaping, um, that type of service. Any questions on that one? So repair, personal service. Um, this is any of your like automotive garage type repair, this is your, um, barbershop, cosmetologies, um, nail shops. Okay. And we have one more that says wholesale. We don't really have a lot of wholesale, but everyone's the same percentage as that. Again, we, we don't really have a whole lot of wholesale. Um, at one time, there used to be a business out on Walnut Street, and they had those pallets, and they would sell them, they fell under wholesale. Um, they would kind of buy that and resell it, so.
Maybe the history to it, cause like a lot of the code, I mean, it's all kind of copied, right? Copied from one source to another, and like, these rates are all pretty standardized. It doesn't look like there's been any significant movement. But, you know, what, when you're looking at grocery receipts, one of the things that I think, we have a new medical facility coming in, right? We have x-ray machines, you know, beam from that field. One thing that this doesn't do is take into consideration overhead. So for example, if you, financial advisor, you've got a computer, you're the talent. If you've got a medical office, you have tremendous overhead. This is taken on grocery receipts and on final profit. So I guess by grouping it only on the professional services, there's a lot of variance between, not, uh, that operating profit, between different services. I don't know, I, I don't have a solution for it, but there is a disparity, I think, because it's not specifically not, I don't know if we could break this out more in the future. It looks like we're in line with everybody else. But you know what'd be really cool as council? Is if we could cut business license taxes by chomping at some block in the budget. I don't think we're there, but I think it's something we should be aiming at, you know?
I know that some of these are categorized by what's in the state code. So I'll pull state code, or Claire could pull state codes. And we'll send that out to you guys to kind of look over, if that's okay?
That's perfectly fine.
And some of these are at the max rate, like this one, we, wholesale, that's, that's how you know.
And I guess unless we knew, kinda like we did for a middle tax analysis last year, like where you could actually look at the number of companies that you have within each of these specific categories, you're not gonna be able to determine what impact reducing this by one basis point's gonna do to your total budget.
So we, the software that we have will let us break it down by category, to tell how many we have in each one, so we can, we can give that to you.
Well, you know, the other thing that that would show us is in regards to the health of the town, if you look at that trend over five years, and you see that your professional services are falling off very hard, it gives you a, it gives, it would give the council good situational awareness for the top line to know where, where the revenues are actually coming from. And that situational awareness we don't have. But I'm also not trying to create a lot of homework either, right? But for professionals, they, they get the, get the high tax rate, right?
So do we have any more questions about any other kind of rates? The, the only thing that I was gonna recommend to increase was the, the trash, um, garbage dumpster rates, and then the convenience fee. That's the only thing, like everything else, I was, we would say, that was fine if you all. So are we good to move on? Okay. Another item that we had talked about was donation expenses. I sent this out with the email on Friday as well. Let's not look at that at all.
Was that four years ago?
Um, twenty-one through twenty-five. Oh, there's... Okay. Um, so this is data from July one, twenty-twenty-one, up through March the eighteenth. So, like I said, like four years worth of data, community expenses is then thirty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars. Other expenses, four thousand, two seventy-eight, school-related, eight thousand, four eighteen, town-related, one hundred and fifty-five thousand. So, I, I mean, is there specific questions on donations? Would you like to see what we donated this year?
What do you say, what's the difference between community expense and town-related expense?
Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens, the transit bus, we consider that a community expense. Um, like Historic Crab Orchard Museum, donation, we consider that a town expense. But these are the, sorry, um... The ones that are folded from, they're down. That's what we have done this year. Can you guys see that? Um, so we've had the Fair Association, again Appalachian Agency for Senior Citizens, that's a monthly invoice, um...
Could you graph the amount and just drag it down to the six thousand of the last year so we can see the subtotal?
What?
So if you take with a twenty-five hundred-ish, two thousand five hundred, that's already highlighted?
Yes.
If you select that cell and just drag down to the six thousand, we'll be able to see the total amount on the bottom right-hand side of the screen. So you're at...
Thirty-five, nine, sixty-three.
And we, we budgeted like thirty-two? A little too far? I know we've talked about some guidelines, or set some date guidelines for, for donations, just to try to manage it better.
Right.
Do you think it's achievable to just knock that out in the first quarter?
Honest?
Yeah?
I don't think so, because you're always going to have these trickle-in, and if you give it all away, at your, it's your donation line item. If you want to spend it all that first quarter, you can, but then you want to have folks like that's on your agenda tonight, that's what I thought you asked.
I don't think we're too far out on the buoys, you know, when you look at the, that section?
Consider, we keep budget slack.
You do keep budget slack?
And so we're not, and it's not like we're egregiously over. I mean, if we were looking at fifty thousand, you know, we still got three months to go, uh, that, I would consider that kind of like a red flag, but...
I mean, six thousand, no, three thousand dollars is, that's, that's pretty good.
It's safe to get a lot of it, of course.
Wait, it's because you guys are nice.
Well, I, you know, what should we be spending money on? And, you know, investing, it's three hundred dollars to invest in a kid to go to a DECA competition, a nationals, like and get the experience and invest in their education, like that's, as long as we're within limits. This in the, the actual budget, I just, I don't want to overspeak on it, but, let's see, it's in... The way I kind of view it is I take the community development and donations section of the budget, which is scheduled for this upcoming year to be like a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. And this is just the donation portion of that. So if you take one eighty-four, seven twenty-five, so a hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars, divided by, what's, you got seven point eight million on the budget?
This one that we're in right now is seven point two, so it did get a lot of...
Okay, so we're forecasting a... One second. So a seven point six million dollar budget. So one eighty-four, seven twenty-five, divided by seven point six. So it's, your, your total community donations are two point four percent of your total budget. And in terms of like, you know, just putting it in perspective of like what the, the comprehensive budget, now this is one section of our community development. Tasle Today's another item that we're going to be discussing. So when we, for our responsibilities from police fire EMS to paving, all that stuff, all the public goods, to have our community development section be two point four percent of our budget, kind of shows where our priorities are, right? So we're focusing on our, our business that we got to do, but we're still, I, I think that that's between the buoys for, uh, where we should be in community donations. But I, that's the way I frame this one, is looking at it like, in, in, in terms of the whole budget versus just the community donations. So if we, we budgeted thirty-two thousand, we're at thirty-five, we've got a couple more months left, do you have budgets like built in? Like, I don't think that we're egregious here, I don't, what do you?
No, uh, like I said, if we were shooting at like fifty thousand plus, it, then I think we're more on red flag, but, uh, because it, that's not so much that it's a red flag that we're donating that much, but we've gone that far in the budget. But I, in my opinion, I think we've got a couple different types, we've, we've got to break out these categories, but we also have donations that are basically like, we've done this donation every year, so it's kind of like earmarked in there, right?
Like the Fair Association is earmarked?
The, the, the fair, the, uh, Crab Orchard, those kind of things, like we've always, it's a community thing that we've always done, and, you know, we just kind of say, alright. And then we have folks that trickle in, you know, each month, and like some of them, like the DECA projects, just about every year we have somebody go to DECA, and they come in, and it's kind of like, alright, we're over budget, but here it is, and we donated to the kid last year, we donated this year kind of thing. But I think we just need to have a little bit more structure on, on how we go about, I guess we need to review those annual donations that we basically kind of run for standard. And we need to, like I said, I, I think we're okay staying close to our target. Uh, we just need to keep, I, I like what we're doing with keeping a reminder, hey, we're already over budget, let's try to be conscious of that. And we also, you know, got to be fair and consistent, not everybody deserves a max donation. I mean, like, a hundred people doing a low-budget thing, and a three hundred people doing a high-budget thing, that's, might be in the same category, but it's not the same donation, right? So, like I said, I, I think we're, we're doing pretty good on donations, but I, I do think we need to evaluate what we do and what we get out of it. We talked about like business, they're not businesses, but events, uh, OTR, uh... Tasle Today, talked about like trying to get those kind of things to where they can, those, those businesses, or, uh...
Organizations.
Organizations, that's the word, or, they, we can help them get started, and they can, need to pick it up and, and kind of take it. Yes, we support, we always support, you know, police, uh, you know, just like we support everyone.
I want to give a little bit of background on Tasle Today. Um, this is not me advocating for or against any money, it's just how the organization is supposed to be run as a Main Street organization. Um, it is supposed to be in conjunction with the town. So Tasle Today is the de facto economic development arm of the town. So it's not just an independent organization, like Back of the Dragon's independent organization, just wanted to give that.
No, I understand that, but like in, I guess what I, I was looking at, and what I'm thinking of is, in the numbers that they brought to the last budget meeting, all those other Main Street, uh, communities, there was a lot of them that had a fundraising section that was significant.
Well, you said there's Tasle Today.
Well, the Tasle Today one was like four thousand dollars.
Hmm, no.
On that, uh, I'm...
You just showed me before the meeting that you had, well, you got it, you can speak to the numbers, but it was something like twenty-three was, twenty-three thousand was raised, it cost about thirteen a day, maybe, something similar. So, um, so it's, it's, we're with that. You know, one other thing that would be helpful, I don't want you to hang up on Tasle Today. Well, I guess this is the second for it, so I don't know what that is, but, um, the, the evaluation criteria is, is something that I was trying to understand for maintaining, maintaining the, the status of Tasle Today's, uh, the Main Street, the advancing Main Street designation, because there's, there's multiple tiers there.
Yes.
And maintaining that status, um, you know, it'd be helpful to, you know, hear, hear again the benefits that I can bring, but I want to understand more on the evaluation criteria that they, they use in order to allow you to retain that status. When I saw, when I was reading the report on it, there's like seven criteria that they're looking at, you know, that may come from your experience.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, if I did, forgive me. We just recently, I don't have the date in front of me, we just recently met with our, uh, DHCD rep on those criteria. I don't think we have a written approval back, we received that event in Main Street accreditation for another year.
And we'd be happy.
I mean, to sit down, or, and, and...
Or get one of them to come out.
I don't have it in front of me, I have to forgive you. I sat in the meeting and was like, sounds good.
I'm lying. Um, I can tell you, in order to do that, there's a multi-prong, because you have to fill out a, you have to fill out something with the Virginia Main Street, but you also have to fill out something with Main Street America, and it is, it's very, very lengthy evaluation process, and part of it is about self-evaluation, where you are on certain parameters, and where you think you could use improvement. Um, and I do have, I couldn't print out the whole report that we filled out, I had to take it in screenshots, and I haven't compiled it into one, but the screenshots, oh my goodness. Let me see. Because the, the Main Street America was the one that was fairly lengthy. It's over thirty, thirty-five screenshots, maybe even more. Um...
For what?
For Main Street America, and that, I mean, I was not able to print it out. Um, I've printed off previous years because you can see your answers to it, but you can't see the question and how you were supposed to evaluate it. So, for me, I needed to know what the question was to see where our ranking came in, so I compared it for years to years, from, from your year. So that's why I, I did the screenshots so I can compile it into a... Into something that is actually useful.
Our DHCD representative said that, uh, in previous years, they've come to town council and presented, she'd be happy to do that again, go over the entire thing. If, if you all would like, I'm positive we can make that happen. She would speak with a lot more authority than I would, just receiving the report, she would know the ins and outs.
Sure.
That sounded like I was passing the buck, and that wasn't my idea.
Yeah, you're just recruiting talent, that's all.
That's right, I'm a passer, I'm going to get somebody else to play the heat, you know? But if you all would like that, I, we could try and set that up for May, maybe?
That's what I was going to ask, would you all want us to put it on the agenda for a future council meeting?
I was, I was talking to, I think there's, there's a few areas that could, um, for, where we can increase transparency on just the relations. One of those would be like, because you all give quarterly reports, right? So you, like, you report those up, you know, it just seemed like, I was talking to Alicia Bell on this, like, just, you see in council on this?
Right.
Because it shows economic data, which we have a hard time tracking, uh, we've seen that, looking at like real tax, and trying to tabulate.
Right.
County volunteer hours, like, to me, that's one of the, the bigger, bigger items that is gained by having this organization. We know that, like, the organization, in order to maintain the advancing Main Street, you've got to have the nonprofit, so the stats got to be there. But I do think we have some hard decisions to make. The hard decisions that I think we, we have on it...
What was that?
What you got, Jared? Oh, I was just asking which number, I, I want to apologize, I was wrong, that was the county donation, that was only four thousand.
Oh, yeah, and that was probably, I think they gave four thousand for the mention for a cash grant?
In June, ten, thirteen, ten, right?
Possibly, it was probably a thousand for one and, and three thousand for the other, yeah.
Like, you showed me before the meeting, we're somewhere at this point in the year, and you operate on a calendar year.
We do.
So for twenty-twenty-four, so last year's, it was ten thousand dollars that was fundraised. It was, it's something like...
Based on the difference?
Yeah, on the difference between what it cost you, so...
Ten thousand, maybe, I don't know.
And then the year previous is eleven thousand, there's, uh...
I'm sorry, it's contributions, I'm not sure what the...
Well...
I'm going to say, I'm going to do it to extend it.
Thirty-three, I think it's, you guys?
Oh. So the year prior, yeah, this is... Yeah, we are. Contribu-, well, it's... So the contributions are just individuals giving money, just flat out, you know, and that is... I consider part of the fundraising. So really, the fundraising would be specific events, like we helped the Polar Plunge, we had the Turkey Trot, um, we had a murder mystery party, so those would be like specific fundraising events. But contributions, like anyone that gave us, um, a sponsorship for a event, or, you know, anything like that, anybody that just flat out gave us money, um, that's contributions.
So really, you can combine those two numbers as part of it.
Really, yeah, exactly.
All right, so where are we year over year for the last trailing three years on how much outside support is Tasle Today getting, you know, talent? We, we usually do two years, because we just announced that year in the budget, like, when we gave a hundred thousand dollars, okay? Really want to get you off the ground running, you know, expect Tasle Today organization to become more self-resilient, more self-funded as the years increase. Last year was reduced to seventy-five thousand dollars, that was married up to the operations expenses. Yes, this year?
Well, here's the thing, because it's not just operations expenses, because the contribution that you are giving to Tasle Today covers a contribution towards operating, but it also covers all of the town's event costs. So Tasle Today pays all of the bands, any bouncy hats, any...
Right, that's, that's what we funded, so that, that was the aim point for the funding. So, just to concept, this is just a, a lens of work on you, that, you know, the... So just to concept, this is just a lens that works on you, that the, where the funding comes from for this organization should come from multiple facets. That comes from D H C D, because they don't wanna see town funding dry up, and then the organization die, and the efforts for advancing, like, the advancing main street status die off because you don't have that. So I wanna know where we're going from, like, what are we trending? Like, are we trending up, or are we trending down? What's the number from two years ago, when we gave 100,000 dollars and said, we're looking for you on to grow, or self-sufficient? And that funding was reduced? Like, is there a positive level there?
That funding reduced, I can tell you, last year, if you all remember, we had that question about that $15,000 grant match. While that was in question, we had that in a reserve account. So it was not in our operating funds, which calls us to have less funds to spend on events. So a lot of the events last year, until that was figured out that it could be an in-kind donation for your town, a lot of our event spending was reduced. So we were trying to do things on a way-reduced budget. I wouldn't have liked to do more and had bigger things, but with that money and the restricted funds, we weren't able to. And that's, that's one of the things about the organization. The reason we went with the, you know, just set amount, is so the organization wouldn't keep on coming back and asking for money. So that is not something that we wanted to do at all. And we were able to do it and make it work, and then, you know, pull it back out, and that put us in a lot better breathing room, so that we were able to do things, if that makes sense. So like, last year, for a while, it was, it was tight, you know, it was kind of hold your breath.
Right, and we definitely wanna get out. I was misunderstanding, for this year, because of the uncertainty, the items that we have, you know, going on that we're discussing now, it makes it difficult, it makes it difficult.
I haven't been able to plan anything.
For Main Street movement, stuff like that. You said since that we do wanna see, you know, we talked about, how this is, but I don't think you ever answered my question on where it's, what are we trending?
We are trending towards the positive.
By how much?
By how much, I would have to look at what I do not just.
So they, last year, on calendar year 24, they, between contributions and fundraising, they did 20% of their revenue was through fundraising and contributions.
And that was in '24?
That's, yes, '24.
'24 is 20%.
Just wanna be, that percentage would be our contribution to fail this year.
So in.
It'll be skewed.
Yeah, it'll be skewed by.
I'm not trying to, so. So 2024, we raised almost 23,000, and our expenses were just over 13,000. So the year before that, we raised 23,700, and our expenses are 21,143.
Can you repeat that back? So, was the year we were on first?
So 2023, the fundraising number was 23,710.
Okay, expenses?
Expenses were 21,143.
Okay.
So that's.
2,500 bucks. And then in '24, Joe just said you guys got to like 20%.
Well, it was, the total was, what was it you just said, 20, 23?
23, roundabout, I mean, it's really close to 23,000 that we raised. And the expenses for that were 13,220.
Yeah, just off those two, my mind was 22,250 bucks.
Increased by 280%. So it's like.
So, and there, I mean, there is one event that we're gonna have in May, that we're really hopeful, based off of what has happened with the being a fundraiser for project grad raising that we've been a part of. We're really hopeful that that will be a really good event. But this is the first year that we've done it for ourselves, so we don't, no, don't know how to plan for that yet, if that makes sense.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we've not even started a budget, and we've got 43 minutes.
Yeah.
Well.
Can we, can we pick back up in a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Can I, can we?
On 6:05, we call it, call it. This is gonna be an important section of it, we're gonna have to have more meetings, like, to get this started.
We have to set a public hearing tonight for this in May. Like, it has to be, you have to have your first hearing in May, you have to vote in June.
And we can, we can do that, but we'll probably have to do more work before that time's up. Okay, so you're trending upward in terms of fundraising.
Yeah.
The other challenge that I have, well, is, and I know I picked on the skating rink, and you said that there are outstanding circumstances surrounding it.
There were outstanding circumstances with last year. Now, the year before that, it did well in November, December, come January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I do think that your organization should take that into consideration, like, you don't wanna keep on doing these events.
We wanna do it one more year to see where it falls, you know, get everything in line, open it much earlier in November, so we have the preseason. But then, yeah, we've talked about that internally, about evaluating where that stands.
Right, and the final other thing that I have regarding this, I have a challenge on the town side, to where we issue, you know, we issue funds, I've talked about the volunteer dollars being like the greatest aspect. Of course, you're pulling the team together to do these things. But from a town and fiscal responsibility seat, you know, we don't have a contract, we loosely had a memory, a little understanding that maybe it was signed, maybe it wasn't signed, we have to locate.
It was never signed by the town.
It's never signed by the town.
Last year, it was not.
I still don't know why.
And regarding, like, basically, if we need to follow procurement measures in order to get a contract to where we can actually have oversight on the events and the quality and efforts, if we don't have those steps, that's gonna be a challenge for me to continue to support the funding for it. Because the town issuing these funds, we have a responsibility to our taxpayers, so we need to have a contract in place. We may have to go through procurement to do it, that's okay.
I'm not familiar with what that would look like for us.
Well, before.
Or for the town.
Yeah, we do a donation and then we create contracts, so I'm no lawyer, but in order to get this arrangement tighter, this is something that I'm looking for.
Well, it's my understanding, not negotiating at all, it's my understanding that there has been trying to get a contract together, I mean, for both sides, so everybody knows what's expected. It hasn't happened. I know on the TASL Today side, they wanted it split up so that, you know, okay, these are the town events, these are actually the bare minimum town events that you have to do. If you wanna do more, great, but this is the bare minimum.
Why would we need a contract when we fund it?
You're giving a donation to a nonprofit that then can deal with money while they're raising. You don't have any oversight, you don't have a sign of the random understanding. It's a handshake agreement, we're nice folks, and it's worked out pretty well. But in order to tighten up the arrangement and be, you know, better sure of the money, follow procurement, and have a contract is something that you would do for a donation of this size.
I can tell you in years past, when I was the treasurer with previous administration, it was, there was always some ambiguity over who was supposed to do what, and.
It's not really creative.
If we did something that somebody thought that we weren't supposed to do, then we were in trouble. And if we didn't do something that somebody thought we were supposed to do, then we were in trouble. So it was, it just, the contract simply would be, this is what you do, this is what we do, everybody. There's the understanding across the board, so there's no question. If there is any question, you can go back to the contract.
Expectations, I'm sorry.
Exactly, it's allowing expectations.
I think that's.
And I found out the same, the town declined to sign the MOU, not TASL Today.
And I think that is probably, I don't, this is speculation.
Well, it doesn't matter, because we're gonna move forward anyway.
Right, right, and you all have acted in good faith and recruited volunteers on all that and stuff. I set five minutes on it, but we're past, we're delaying too long, I know you've got a lot to get there. But I do think we need to continue the conversation on it, I do think the contract would be something that would tighten this area up.
Me too. And I'm not negotiating it on either end.
So the contract that we had said we would like these events, and we would like X amount of dollars spent on these events, but we never signed.
Okay. And under legal advice, we didn't sign.
So why didn't we sign?
Because we didn't follow procurement processes.
Do you have to procure a donation?
You don't need to, for a nonprofit, you don't have to procure a donation. That's what we've operated under the past. But last year, the conversation flipped. Brad's not here, I'm not gonna, you know, throw him and say this is his fault. But when you have a signed contract, when you didn't follow procurement, like, there's, it's part of the reason we added to the code last year, right, with the actual, here's the benchmarks, because people didn't know when they compete. And this, a contract just tightens things up, the assembly set it. Like, this is, previously, there's been the ambiguity between whose responsibilities was, and relationships get damaged. This would be a way to clean it up, and we'll just tidy it up. But we didn't do it before because of this donation clause. And then the responsibilities were in favor of this.
I just wanna say this, and I know that these folks in this area will likely know this. It's not just a random nonprofit asking for a funding request. TASL Today has created a department with the town. I don't know if that makes any difference on the contract, or the MOU, or whatever, but it's not like, hey, write us a check, and we're gonna do whatever. The goal is a partnership to further the town and TASL, not any individual person. And I believe TASL Today has meant that, unless there's something I don't know, which is likely. But I believe we've meant that, so, you know, there's not, it's not just a random nonprofit. I don't think we should consider it as that.
No, I don't view it as that. I see it as having some kind of operational control over the dollars that we get from our taxpayers to a nonprofit. So, for example, I'll pick on the ice rink, it's like, okay, if it's not working, we need to pivot.
You're not, you're not the first one, I've been one of those people.
Yeah, right, like, you gotta pivot. So a contract would enable us to have that operational control from the section that we don't have.
So moving forward, I'm here, if we continue to interact, we need a contract, an MOU, and if that means we need to procure, we need to take that step?
Yeah, I mean, we've got history with that, I mean, you can award contracts based on we received that, and, you know, we need the other guidance, clearly, clearly fit.
Okay.
I mean, I'm gonna speak for TASL Today, it's really not my role to speak for anybody, but I'm going to. We'll do whatever the town needs us to do to continue our relationship. We, I believe we're on the verge of some big things in this area, I truly do. But it doesn't happen if we can't all cross all the t's and dot all the i's.
Okay, great. Come on, Ben. So can we start doing budget review, and then we'll possibly revisit when we get on down in the budget? Okay.
So do you?
So I'm willing to go through here, and you guys please stop me if you have any questions. There's not a whole lot of change in revenues, there's a little. So last year, we had a reassessment, so we did end up collecting more in real estate taxes than budgeted, so I upped that just a little. Personal property current, so it's our current years. Again, we received more than what I had budgeted, so I upped it just a little. If I'm going too fast, please tell me. Public service corporation, so this is their utility tax, this is things like air, Verizon Wireless, Sprint, Selco, those are things like that utility type, and Norfolk Western is also in that for the railroads. So they were over what I had budgeted, and I raised it just a little, $6,000. Here's our other local taxes, bank franchise, utility tax, mill's tax. Mill's tax, I did increase it, so we are, we are set to receive a lot more mill's tax than what I had budgeted. But as that market sometimes is not so stable, I didn't wanna increase it too much. However, we do have two new restaurants coming on Main Street, so I am very optimistic about that. But again, I didn't wanna raise it too much, so I just raised it a little. Permits, this is their building zoning, property maintenance, raised just a little bit. We've had some bigger jobs go on. Business license, we kind of already covered our rates and everything. That, overall, that whole section only increased $9,000, not a whole lot. Use of money and property interest, so yes, we have received a lot more in interest, and I like to use that as a kind of catch-all, if we need to do something with it later on, that we do have some funds to do that. So there is a line item that I wanna talk about, if I can find my mouse. Transfers in, and there's $125,000 there. So you guys had just heard me say things like mill's tax was overperforming. There's some other line items in here that are overperforming. Here's what I would like for us to talk about for just a minute. Our Route 460 project, everything is back on track for it, we are good to go. We have already got some of the materials, we have pipe on order, it's gonna happen. We've already signed the loan, it's closed. What I would like to see us do, this, and it's called fund balance. So whatever we have that's overage in revenues and expenses at the end of the year, goes in what's called fund balance. I would like for us to pull $125,000 of this fund balance out of this budget, have Jessica put it in an L G I P, and when we go into our '26 budget, put it back in that budget, and this is going strictly to paving, that Route 460 project. Paving is supposed to be $250,000. So that is what I would like to talk about for just a minute, if you all have any thoughts.
You're saying overages from '24, '25?
Yes.
Will go into the '25, '26 budget?
Yes.
A whole for '26, '27?
No, for '26.
Okay.
Like, that money will be used to pay, that is, that is your ask for right there for Route 460.
You got any more?
Yes.
I think we need.
Yes, there is, there's more. Yes. Yes, there is. There's more.
Is it over or under 300? I guess we just call it.
333?
333.
250 is for Route 460. So that's your fin castle.
Yep. You need to do more paving, or you can scrap like the increase in fees on paying off the trash truck. I guess there's different ways to skin it, but you could do more paving. That would be very popular. Your reserve is okay.
I'm asking to spend $125,000 for our Route 460 paving. Now, if we did above and beyond that, that can be a discussion, but for this budget, I need that.
What's your, your LGIP reserves? Your 35%?
Yes.
And that total again is, we talked about it maybe a month ago.
Which, the total of LGIP?
LGIP emergency fund. It's over 25% of the budget.
It is. I was thinking it was 28. Do you have, is your cash balance report?
Right. Well, the reason I bring that up is we talked to the DRS, right? Says, how much should we make to do your emergency fund? They said 25% of your general fund budget.
Yes.
If we're at $2.8 billion, we could spend the entirety of the $300,000 versus $125,000 on capital improvements. Think of how we come in and talk about inaccessibility on Main Street. Like you can hit these capital improvements with budgets like a need your emergency fund in place and be in your shape. So I guess that's, this is just my opinion on it. But if you wanted to put more funds to do public goods?
Okay.
I'm for that.
So I absolutely think that we will have $125,000 to go in our fund balance. So for the purpose of this meeting tonight, again, I'm asking for 125. As we get closer to the end of our budget, we can absolutely revisit that, and we can pull those funds, and next year, we can even do a budget amendment to bring those in. That's perfectly fine. But are you all?
If you pay your own debt and you do capital goods, capital improvements, that's good use of taxpayer dollars.
Are you all good with that? Like, do you all have any questions? Because I don't, I don't want to leave anything.
I guess the big thing for me would be, we can budget what we want for paving, but wouldn't we have the manpower to do? You know, you get to that balance of now we gotta get a contract. I'd rather, you know.
I definitely don't want a contract because we bought it on paper without the necessary piece of equipment. I do know that there are gonna be a set staffed bunch of their town crew out there working on the Route 460 project. Now, can they come off of that and do another job? Sure. But.
We gotta be conscious of that too.
Right.
We can, we can put too many dollars in paving, but I think that do paving is not worth it.
Okay. So are we good with, we're good with that particular line item? And as we get closer to the end of this fiscal year, we can look at that again. And we can, we can have this discussion again if we want to do some other improvements. But that was one that I really wanted to make sure that we went over.
That will be popular. Just speaking as a citizen, you hear people talk. That'll be really popular.
Every March, paving's a huge issue.
I'm sorry, sir.
Every March, paving's a huge issue.
Well, I'm sure that.
Air state revenue, air sales tax, we are over, overachieving in it. That's my word, over. We're getting more money. A lot of budget. My bad. I'm just lying. I'm so sorry. And so is our VDOT. And we, again, this is how I've kind of loaded our budget to where we have a little bit of comforts on. So.
So do we not, those aren't set amounts prior to the fiscal year?
Sales tax is not. It's based on however much you have sales in your family.
Oh, VDOT payments is what I'm saying.
VDOT isn't coming out until we start our fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
So after July 1, we'll get a letter that says, oh, you're gonna receive X amount of dollars.
Gotcha.
And it's, it's been continuously going up in how much we get. So that's why I felt comfortable enough to up it some.
Gotcha.
But even, even if we stay the same, even if I up it what I did, we're still fine. Okay. So here is air refuse collection. Our garbage increase is in there. I did it at $33,000. Recreation revenue, it's pretty much stayed the same. It went up $3,700. Fire department revenue. So I researched and found in air minutes where council had approved many, many years ago for us to bill for fire department calls for structured fires because your homeowner's insurance has a deductible for that. Anything that would not be paid, we would write and bill off. So I have been asked if we were ever gonna do that. So I didn't know exactly how much to budget for, but that was something that was already voted on, and truthfully, we should have already made it, but it wasn't. So unless you all tell me not to do that, but again, it was already voted on. I've got that. I just don't have it with me. But it's just $2,000 off then. Okay, rescue squad billing. We are right on track. Like we are at 75% revenues in our current budget. So I do believe that we're gonna hit what we've got in there for this year. Honestly, I just rounded it up to an even number just to look pretty, and it's $3,000. But I do think that we are set to hit what we've got budgeted for in this budget right now, which is $1,597. Our next line item are donations. It didn't really change hardly at all. Miscellaneous revenues, again, didn't really change at all. So we are at total revenues of $7,591,392.91. Anybody have any questions on revenue? We did that in a whole 10 minutes, guys. Okay. Expenses, mayor, town council. So I think that we had in there like a case of needing to replace a laptop or anything like that, but I reduced that because we did just get in the book crop comp books. Town attorney. So the projections are that we needed to increase our town attorney legal fees line item, so I have done that. Administration. I mean, if you guys have any questions, there's not that much that has changed a whole lot. We reduced some of our items. If we'll be honest, I've reduced a lot of things.
But then the office supplies, what?
Well, it looks that way, but it's not exactly. Jessica, tell them about our office supplies.
Oh, you split.
Who fusses about our office supplies?
Yeah. But a big thing and the big expense is toner.
I see that.
And I suggested that we create its own line item so that we can track that expense a little bit better. And so you'll see that throughout in this for different departments as well to just, instead of just supplies, it's gonna have a toner line item.
Our idea is if we can see that we're spending a lot of it on toner, when we go to replace a printer copier, what, what have you? We look to see, okay, what kind of toner does it take? Is this the toner that's been eating us alive? That's where the kind of mindset came to track our toner.
I think it'll either eat you alive.
It does, and it's short as words.
This is also just, there are printers and copiers in our offices too, as well.
So our big cannon copier has been the dust. And yes, we've got a package that we're gonna have to have, a new copier printer, and it's $150 a month-ish.
For just the least of $1,900.
Does that include toner? Yes.
It includes toner?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Auto-ordered.
And maintenance.
Yep.
So yes, that's it been the dust and what we've been trying to live through the rest of this year. All right. So we'll move on.
Some could do desk printers. They have that as well. I don't know if it'd cost us anything.
Most of us have like Sam's HP specials, so.
I guess, my thought on that was just, that may be a way, if you're spending $7,000 a year on toner, that might offset it if you're taking.
So this is our police department. So we have, we have cut, we have added, we have spent a lot of time having some discussions. So just kind of wanna scroll down through here a little bit. If you guys have any questions, please stop me.
Chief, I've always had a question on manpower, manpower.
Yes.
A lot of 14 officers, correct?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. How's that compared to Southern Miss Valley? Is that good?
Is that, we're, we're, if you'll go back in your council packets and look, our call volume has doubled within the year. We went from about 7, 650, 700 calls from last March, almost 1,200 this March. Locality-wise, we're right there with everybody. We're running a one-two shot of a ship where everybody else is running. We're hanging. You got a good facility. We got the best facility in South Carolina, Virginia, and we're not complaining.
And you have an officer in the academy right now?
We do. We're full house. Something will change very soon, but we're full house. First time we've been full house in a long time. So we're, we're good.
That's rare.
It's very good. And it's going to change soon, but it's, we're happy, and we're not complaining.
So I think we rolled around through here. I have found out something last week. We usually get a grant from USDA Rural Development. There is a, I don't wanna be, I don't mean Debbie Downer, but there's a chance that we're not getting it. They did tell me no, but they said that right now with their budget, they still don't know what grant dollars they're gonna get. So it's not out of the possibility, but it may be in the.
And we got denied last year on that.
We did.
We're falling behind on vehicles because we've depended on rural development.
Right.
But that is, we're, I don't foresee that happening.
So because we're not so optimistic, but we're hopeful, we did cut the police cruiser line item by $22,000, which would have been from that rural development. But again, he didn't tell me no. He said they still don't know whether. So that's our police department.
How are you on, how are, are we on track with our replacement program?
We're behind two. Oh.
They're technically behind three, but we're behind four. We're gonna go behind four. If this doesn't come through, we'll be behind four.
Is it mileage or hours?
Uh, we definitely just do mileage. We've got someone that's got some high mileage on it. We looked at another program, and we thought that we have something that's presented that, but that's not happening. But the mileage, our maintenance is getting us on.
And any questions for police department?
Just the last one. What's the mileage rate for replacement?
It's, it's always been, there's not a numeric, but we don't like to go anything above 150. We've got a couple of those. It's not even on heaven's door. We've got some that's over 150, and it's not even on heaven's door, but we're hanging. We ain't complaining. We're hanging. We got the best building this side.
And you're full.
And today, we're full.
Today.
They've changed.
Our fire department did not change a whole lot. It actually decreased $3,200. That's pretty much all that happened in fire department. And most of it's just shifting funds. Sanitation. It looks like we had some changes in health insurance, and it brought down their totals, but nothing really has changed in that either. Recreation. So I just have to find it. Hang on one second. Aqua park down here. So I've got budgeted right now $14,000. This is an increase of $9,000, and it is to replace pieces of our aqua park at the next year. Like next budget year, we can go ahead and plan, you know, maybe, maybe we replace two pieces. Maybe we replace one big piece. But we did budget that in after we had discussions on that earlier this year. That was pretty much the biggest increase there. There was a decrease of $35,000. This was the VDOT recreational access at the Little Leaf Field. So we did have to repay what was already expended in that project, and that's an expense that we won't have anymore. So we got to get rid of that. Rescue squad. Sorry.
On the recreation side?
Yes.
One of the items that we talked about is kind of part of the comprehensive plan was cabins particularly out there. I'm just throwing this out there because I think it's a way that you can make money, just like Capex does. You know, if you run primitive camping around the lake, you've got plenty of spaces for it. Like a beautiful spot would be right-hand side where there's pine trees and there's a nice cut of, there's already a picnic table there. But there's an angle there to increase some revenue by renting out primitive camping sites. All it does is just get some roller taxis and build it in a water track level. Nice place for a tip set, trash can to be bear-proof. But it kind of gets us inching closer towards the goal of lodging there to, for tourists to come to, which that Capex, they said that they say will have a hop. Yeah. It could be an angle to go to, you know, step in that direction. But I don't know if that's anything that we're interested in. I think you would get folks out there, for sure.
Anything else? Recreation. Okay, EOMs. There are a couple of line items that we really need to talk about here. Okay, so let's look at equipment. And the more that I thought about this, if we did it, I think we would have to create a new line item for this. It would not actually go in equipment. However, this is at the time that I was doing the vote, what I thought. Cindy, before you auction out, you're gonna have some auction items. She's sending two of her ambulances to auction because. She's sending two of her ambulances to auction because they're a third of the life. The cost is more to fix than what you're gonna get out of it. Um, so that's one of her two ambulances shot of her fleet. We do have an ambulance that's been on order since COVID and we're supposed to get it in the next couple of months. Since COVID, five years ago. But it's an eighty-twenty grant, so I have budgeted for that ambulance in this line item here that says grants eighty-twenty. So that's why you see such a high increase there. Um, in the equipment line item, because she needs a new ambulance, I have an idea to take a loan for a new ambulance in this budget. And then, you know, next year, I'm gonna want to need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay Route four sixty. Maybe we'll pay it off. But in order to get her where she can run her calls and have dependable vehicles, I have an idea to take out a loan for an ambulance.
Is it a sin thing? Is that gonna be the transport?
Yeah, it's a, it's a thing and it's not one of the box ones. You can get a lot better use out of that with kind of the same.
Kind of being.
Yes, yes.
Well, I remember she requested the van last time because they were running more transfers than anything and it was just better.
So um, well, kind of the eighty-twenty grant, we don't have too much of a choice. It's been on order since COVID. But would, would you all be interested in, you know, letting me get another van, ambulance and do a loan for it? Cause I definitely can't pay for it out of this budget right now.
I mean, I think it's, yes.
Okay.
It makes it easier.
So that's, that's where we were with the EOMs.
So the eighty-twenty grant one.
Yes.
Did we, have we paid on it? We don't pay it until like we did it?
We don't pay it till we get it. We have to like, they have to have it delivered to us, we, we pay.
So is that money still sitting out there in the VIP or something for that budget here? So when that comes, it's just gonna hit us.
That, that's why I've got fifty-five thousand dollars budgeted for that one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, treasures department, it's not really changed a whole lot. Bookkeeping department, not really changed a whole lot. Planning commission stayed the same. Okay. Community development and donation. So there's been discussion about an economic director, an economic assistant, an economic planner. To be honest, I don't know how you all wanna get it, but I put it in the budget because they're gonna talk if you wanna do it. So if you don't wanna do it, we can take it out. We can put it in money. I just.
Yeah, I, just to speak at this for, for a minute, I, you know, I've been pretty strong and uh, pretty passionate about getting someone in here who can help. Because hopefully building economy of the town of Tassle, they did all the research to, you know, see how other towns do and things of that nature. Kind of figuring out a way to pay for it is uh, kind of the, the difficult, difficult thing. But as we have new things coming, like uh, council member Clyde, you know, running with the, the uh, mountain biking course. You know, someone who knows how to work with uh, companies and things like that, people into our town to utilize. Yeah, the things that we have to offer. So I mean, I, I haven't been shy about being a very big proponent of looking to bring someone in who could uh, who could help us with the economic development.
Well, I, I can see where it can be a benefit. I absolutely can see this. Um, yes, Susan and I have been really busy with Route four sixty and wastewater treatment plan. But it doesn't mean that we're not also giving attention to our other projects. Now, could we make things move faster? If I had another set of hands to do this economic portion, sure. Is that gonna benefit us? Yes. So I, I just need to know from you all, is this something that you want to see in your budget or would you like me to take that back out?
My personal thought is last month you, we discussed it and you said you're, we, we discuss the planner more so than a director. In, in the sense that somebody to help you do what you're currently doing. You know, help you to, to take, move the pieces basically. And in the same sense of, we don't wanna overshoot. You don't wanna go and, you know, get, start paying the budget or paying the, the salary of a director and asking them to do all that. And then try to scale back. It's easy, a whole lot easier and more efficient to scale up than it is to scale back.
And, and if we chose to go this route, you know, I, I do have it in there listed as assistant slash planner. And if we do decide to move forward with this and we see that this person is knocking it out of the park and, you know, way over exceeding their expectations, sure, we can grow that position.
For sure. I mean, when it comes to positions like that, you have people that can take it and run with it and make it so, so much more helpful.
Right.
But I guess you wanna see how it works, you know, cohesively within the office to make sure that happens. I, I think it's a safer bet to go planner and work their way up.
I agree. I think if you call it a director, you set them up the phone.
I feel like if we have a economic assistant slash planner, they're under month, they're under month rather. And you know, if something goes sideways and somebody wants to get mad at them, they get mad at me. They, they'll go with that person to get mad at them, like come to me. But if, I feel like if they have that title as director, they cut themselves out there and. I don't wanna do that to someone when it's new to us too. You know, like this whole year, last year and now still is a learning curve for me. I don't wanna put somebody out there when we have expectations, the community might have expectations. I, I don't want to oversell it.
I, I definitely understand, uh, but to end, end the, the uh, the kind of direction you're looking at that. And I, I, I'm kind of fine with that. The, the only, the only reason I prefaced it as a director level is you kind of get what you pay for type thing. So if you bring in someone who has performed at a director level, you know, they already met, there's a very small learning curve for this person. But uh, I mean, council feels that it's better something to, you know, kind of try it out and see what happens. I, I mean, I, I can understand the rationale for that, but uh, when I look at it from a director level position, it's already someone decent and. Yeah, has the contacts in Richmond, has the contacts, you know, all these various organizations. But uh, yeah, that, that was my driving force for having a director level.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you'll get that for forty-five thousand.
And that forty-five is salary. What would the benefits add to the package?
It's sixty-seven.
So I'm sorry, I, I shouldn't have asked that.
No, no, it's in here, it's, it's.
I can't hardly read it, that's why I'm asking. I'm, I'm getting older and I don't listen enough to the screen.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent that, that you're not gonna get someone at that level. Uh, what they, what this shows budgeted for in the secondary portion, not the other additional things that are added yet.
So, so I'd say salary of forty-five thousand, the way I don't think about it today, cause this is a question for town manager. Really, um. At a pavement like that, do you have the ability to fire, forget and get the result that you're looking for? All right, so you got a forty-five thousand dollar employee, you delegate this grant, are you, are you gonna get the quality product that you're looking for? Is it where it actually takes? Does, you're not cleaning it up after somebody. You know, I guess you would, you'd determine that pretty quick after a few tests. But is this a, mayor, did you have a pavement in mind that you would be looking for?
Uh, uh, you know, if you look at salaries kind of across the spectrum, they, they just run them on the size of the locality. Uh, so I, I didn't, I, I mean, I started with, uh, you know, you want them to fall in line with the directors that you currently have or director level positions that you have. Yeah, but uh, I, I mean, that's a long way to say, not really.
I see, like even, even Tim Anderson with the county, I'm pretty sure that he's funded through a grant. They just released like county salaries.
In the voice?
Yeah, I don't think he was on it.
I don't, I didn't see, I didn't walk into it in detail.
I, I am personally for somebody to take the hand or, uh, but didn't come up with it. But that's an example of one of the county. And I don't know, did you have something to the Commonwealth lot so they had to offer returns of helping fund initially?
Uh, you can utilize C-Prop to uh, to help, sorry. It wouldn't be a long term, it would be that initial, all right, here's your injection of, yeah, fifty thousand dollars to get this position started, but it's only a, a one-time deal.
Could you do this on a, an assistant level? Or, or they would occur at the same time?
Uh, so Scotty wasn't uh, that granular when, when I talked to him about it, but he did say that, yeah. We, if we, if the town decides to go down this route, he would gladly work with us to, to come up the way to help fund it and kind of design it.
And so right now our C-Prop is tied up with the traveler, but it's getting ready to close out. So C-Prop funding could be available to us in FYI six, if that's the route that we would want to go. Where is that? Where's C-Prop? Yeah. Right now. Um, I put out our application, done, right? It should wrap up in the next couple of weeks, that was a requirement for.
I think it was like August.
When, when the, when application. Like when it's, like application for this patient.
Mayor, do you know when the application comes out?
Maybe uh, applications are gonna be accepted again in August, but I'd have to go back through my emails to find out exactly.
So when we spoke last about our, and this ties in into the building of the comprehensive plan, but you know, we, we, we're out of time.
We all have to go in a minute.
Okay.
All right. Uh, so if we're still looking at our objectives, right? Capital win chart potentially, not fighting, uh, the flip, will we build for winning chart improvement? What are we serious about those? Is there enough? Because if you go to the director out, I told the mayor this, you don't, you don't have enough assets and cash to, to really give somebody a sandbox to play, right? So I guess if we, if we are serious about these objectives, this is probably the right word for, to necessi, to necessitate the addition of an employee to the organizational chart. But like, are we actually, are we aiming at those other targets at the same time? Are we gonna hit those? We have a good marketing at the fund. Yeah, thank you all for giving us uh, three, the three fifty for mountain money, I think they're making good progress. But that'll be coming on us to push. We need to see traction.
So it's a loose that get, get somebody in there and get them pushed. But, but I, I think right now they got, we've got enough work at, at a assistant planner level to get started on that and develop those plans and expand on those plans to do, to do more. But I guess we're gonna have to reconvene. We'll have a few minutes after the executive session and the first public hearing possibly, but uh, we can come back to it.
Okay.
But right now I'll. Start the budget work session and I'll entertain a motion for executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, second.
Mayor, do you want me to call you?
Any discussion? All those in favor of all of the executive sessions, say aye.
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 I'll uh. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session. Motion. Got a motion, got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, then I gotta certify the executive session. Where's, where's my paper?
It's pulling my files.
Certification of executive session, whereas the town, Tassel County Council has convened an executive session on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas two point one dash three four four point one of the code Virginia requires a certification by this council that such executive session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved, the Tassel County Council hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law. Were discussed in the executive session to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters have were identified and motion convening uh, the executive sessions were heard, discussed, were considered by the Tassel County Council. Um, we gotta do a roll call vote. Council member Davis?
Aye.
Ca, council member Fox?
Aye.
Council member Beasley?
Aye.
Council member Clonan?
Aye.
Council member, uh. Hank, did you, what's the names? Hank, it's a, council member Woods?
Uh.
That's happened. So we are closed and with that, we will call and order our seven o'clock public hearings for credit card processing fees. And. I guess that's gonna be, is there anything? Yes. I'll read the notice of public hearing, please. Notice is hereby given on Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five at seven PM. In the council chambers of the municipal building of the town of Tassel, known as the town, located at uh, two eleven Central Avenue, Tassel, Virginia. The Tassel Town Council will hold a public hearing pursuant to Virginia code fifteen point two dash one four two seven and town charter section two dash two oh nine. To provide the citizens of the town of Tassel an opportunity to be heard with respect uh, to the town's adoption of an ordinance implementing a credit card convenience fee of three percent per transaction. On any consumer who remits payment to the town by credit card instead of by check, cash, or ACH, also known as automated clearinghouse transfer. A copy of the proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection during normal business hours, eight AM to four thirty PM at the town of Tassel Municipal Building as referenced here in above. I'll open the floor to comment. No women's comments from that one?
I'll ask, I'll ask a question. This is, there's nobody here. Anyone need to come up there?
Good process. State the name and address, please.
Sure, origin. I, well, okay. I just wanna ask the same question, that's all. So anyway. Huh?
Do you live in town?
I own a lot of, own a business in town. I pay, I pay the credit card. Uh, Kevin Chris, my business address to two seven four nine Big Castle, Birmingham, plus. I was actually just wanna ask, do you, do you guys know what your credit card fees are? Do your.
They vary depending on.
Depending on what you're using American Express.
They're speaking to the speaker from.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I mean, that was always gonna ask, cause I actually, whenever I had my husband, I'd get four percent if that come up. I mean, say it, don't shoot.
Great, thank you, thank you. Any other comment on the uh, credit card fee ordinance?
Why would it necessarily? You have to.
Well, with that, I'll close the pub, this public hearing and we will reconvene at seven twenty, or actually, I guess we can go back to talking about the budget work session.
If you want to.
You can close the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing. All right. So we've got, uh, thirteen minutes until the next public hearing, so we can go back to the work session.
So we left off with economic assistant slash director.
Uh, who was?
Oh, we had to work the client already there.
Well, there, there is one that, which, uh, Councilmember Haynes was bringing up. And, you know, if we want to table that until the mayor can get back on, because it seems to be something that he's pretty passionate about. Uh, yesterday at the I D A meeting, this, this jumps a little bit, but it's important and we got some time to talk about it and it'll give us time to think about it. The I D A yesterday, uh, Mr. Biden proposed utilizing, so Billy Wagner's been inducted into the Hall of Fame. And the concept was pitched yesterday to the I D A about utilizing the mini part in order to make, get a statue, you know, represent that. So the stats to it is something like twenty thousand baseball players, like three hundred some have been inducted into the Hall of Fame.
Less than two percent.
Less than two percent. Glenn Keane had grown up that he's one of the three closures. Is that right?
One of three closures and he has a pitcher that's been inducted, he's the third.
Yes. And not to call out the Hall of Fame, but apparently umpires can make the Hall of Fame too, so. But, uh, the concept was pitched to the I D A, they seemed agreeable to it, to utilize the mini part in order to, uh, have a, I mean, you want to speak on it, basically have, have a good spot to, to give the base knowledge in this.
Monument Park to honor his accomplishments as a, a Hall of Famer. The first ever from Virginia. Some of those stats were there. He's one of two hundred and seventy out of over twenty-two thousand baseball players that played since the Hall. He's been recognizing players going back to Babe Ruth and Ty Cobb. So he's one of that elite group to do that. And it was brought to my attention, or I think the request to me, or the I D was proposing to me about doing something really big. As you heard me talk about last month, I mentioned about trying to do something to honor the accomplishments to not only recognize Billy, but also do something that I thought would be great for the town in terms of another draw, of, of something that is very unique, not only to Southwest Virginia, but to Virginia as a whole, because he is the first ever major league player, baseball player to make the Hall out of this thing. So it could be an opportunity, not only to really do something nice with the park, recognize him and be his, you know, a nice additional drawing card and really put it at the crown, you know, a jewel in the crown in Main Street. So I've done a little bit of preliminary research, but it's a matter in terms of what it might cost. It was suggested that maybe through contact with Billy, he might be willing to pursue that with white nose and something still, you know, honor him. But it would be basically refurbishing the park entirely, uh, taking into account the easement that's already in place with our neighbor there, to be West with, uh, John Sharon. Uh, but I understand from talking with Councilman Davis that there is possibility of, of a grant that's already in place for Hill Studios to basically rework that, the park area, so this can work hand in glove with that. Which could save a chunk of the money that would need to be raised to refurbish the park or get it ready for this. Because what I had proposed to the group last night was something along the lines of a memorial park to Camden Yards, which is a, a fully brick and brick paper, um, park with several statues there, bronze statues of different players. This of course would just be for Billy and his accomplishment. That was the general idea. I've already done some, some preliminary background checking, Mr. Best calls, his statue with Cooperstown on other places, Indianapolis five hundred, it also uses bronze statues, has artisans in the United States. One group I contacted is, uh, located outside of the United States, it was a, a Virginia, United States based company, but had its foundation based in Asia, uh, that does three D imaging, gave the price that was extremely lower than I thought that it was going to be. But talking about some other possibilities, can do that entire area, this mural with Thomas's were, were on board with that. That's another issue for another time. But I did not talk with Sharon. She is, thinks that the idea is a great idea for the use of park. Into the aspect of possibility of laws, we've got some other things to deal with the easement first. But that was the general idea.
I like the idea of a mural there, because the park's not very big and that's where we put our Christmas tree and all that. It, it would be something that is lasting, you know, as long as we can keep it up.
I think it's great too, it's just a matter of, you'd have to have a loan, basically a long-term lease.
Right.
Use the wall and maintenance is going to be an issue along with the park itself. And so any, what we're looking at in terms of fundraising to do this, that's got to be a part of it.
Right.
I know that, I'd also mentioned, I've talked to the board supervisors, at least with the, uh, the county administrator. Think that the board would definitely be behind this. Still have a lot of work to do, but I think it's one where we're, we're still looking for the possibility. The one studio I talked to said ten to twelve weeks turnaround time delivery to Tassel. If we have the ability, you know, get them the information for the purpose of doing the three D modeling and making the lifestyle statue. So it could be, it could be done.
What were the costs?
Five twelve thousand. Really, I was expecting three, four, I was expecting four times that. And I think if we went with an actual clay model rendition like they do with all of the molds that are used for Cooperstown or from either the Indianapolis five hundred, this is the ways that I looked online. See you did basically copper, under copper, uh, bronze statues and, and those type of lifestyle structures. And I haven't gotten any number information back. I'm expecting those are going to be more in the neighborhood in twenty fifteen, a hundred thousand dollars. So the three D printing may be the best way to go. I just want to make sure that we'll be dealing with a record company, uh, and the history of providing the top-notch professional grade long-lasting product. So I've got some research to do on that. But with the grant, I was anticipating somewhere, you know, with the renovation of the park was probably somewhere in the neighborhood, between thirty-five and fifty thousand dollars there for the brickwork and basic work, the drains and the lighting, everything there that would be involved, uh, in the mural. If it was going to be done, the mural was probably, I know in using Ellen Elm's, uh, for the last project, she was in the neighborhood, twenty-five thousand dollars for that. So that gives you an idea of that, what I'm talking about. So it's definitely, if I was, if I first started putting this together, I was thinking probably neighborhood between a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. Those can be ready. And so this is looking a lot more promising through that term. But as I, I may have mentioned, you all, maybe not, the kind of people I'll talk to. But it's one where utilizing every resource that are available locally, obviously. Reaching out to all the five teams, including twenty-four, uh, reaching out to British Lightyear. Everything from Sports Illustrated to E M P N, to Dick's Sporting Goods, Topps Baseball Cards, all those different organizations. Say, look, this is what we're doing in a small town, this is something where you could help us do something that really puts us on the map and then honors someone who deserves this recognition, uh, first on Virginia, that, that old pitch. Along with, you know, everything from Farron College. Uh, and deal with also, of course, with Lou Pier and Billy's house there. That's what I think would be a real critical component for the mural if it's going to, if it can be done. Be that time there for our baseball players and school. There's just a lot of different branches to tell us to support how positive an impact it could bring. We just got to be able to pull off.
And the grant is just, fits in perfectly with the grant that Tassel today has right now for the planning of Main Street. So it's awesome.
Okay. You say, then go ahead.
And for this? Well, they would change your mini part section. Maybe changes how your, your actual money rolls over and paid.
I think it's a once in a lifetime. It's, I, I keep on, it's, it's beyond once in a lifetime, it's once in a century type thing. I mean, baseball's been around for over a hundred years and he's the first. And he might be the, you know, a lot of good athletes have come through this area and had a lot of accomplishments from actually athletes in both ends of the county. But this one, it's, that's a few steps above, it's pretty big. Now if we can just pull it off before October, it'll be really nice. So we'll see.
Did you bring that up, about possibility of it with October event or?
That's sort of meant in back, I haven't talked to anyone specifically, but it's just a matter, I wanted to see what the timeframe was in terms of, you know, this sort of nicely fell into our life last night, back at our studio, already being on board, just, uh, potentially what we were required. Timeframe for actually doing a statue if, and first we've got to get a presentation together to be able to talk with potential donors. And so that's where Hill Studio can come in, depending on their timeframe, what they can turn around. They have just some preliminary schedules. So when I heard ten to twelve weeks from start to finish that I got from a, it's a group called Star Statue, three months, I was shocked. Like October then would be the one, I think would be a perfect time. One of the things when I talked with Eric Robinson about Billy's one, um, receptivity to the idea. And then it was a matter of the win. And it was just, of course, his schedule was booked. He's got his own son, he's involved with Miller School. His team is like ranked fifth in the country right now for this season coming up. He's, of course, his son is playing, uh, with Toronto, so he's wanting to see some of his, his games. And then he's getting inducted July twenty-seventh, I believe is the date that he actually goes in. So there's a lot there, the October date, if it could be done, uh, at least the statue and park component. I don't know about the mural. But it's always a lot to pack into six months' time. Right now we're already in April, so that's only, what, five months away, six months away. So, uh, but I'm optimistic, at least the reception I've got from everyone I've talked to has been very positive. So I'm hoping that, that, that wait continues.
Hey, the other thing, we've been talking to Senator Hackworth and Delegate Moore till they said that the House passed a resolution. And this is kind of a, uh, town manager, but one of the ideas that they discussed when we were talking about the smart biking concept was, they weren't able to present that resolution, uh, while they were in session. But brought up that they're going to have the, uh, the fourth of July fourth, the town first. So it's something that they, they said, oh, that would be a good timeframe, because you've got the eyes, you've got, you've got the crowd. And it's baseball, so, you know, all those things come together, you know, just something to keep in mind as we're moving into this.
And as much as it can be, I'm real anxious to try to promote and get word out there. But it's a matter of, I won't have to have a lot of pieces in place, if they're all pieces in place for a full scale motion. I, I do believe that Billy has been contacted before that event on the weekend of the fourth of July. Just see if his schedule allows him to be here to, to speak with the kids off. And he's, I know from talking with Eric, who was sort of his liaison, he said, yeah, he's got, been proceeding. So a lot of requests, uh, so.
So we, at seven twenty, we'll have our next public hearing now. And, um, do I just need to read the first page of this? Because there's, I did read the, the second page of the other one, there's quite a bit to read.
I just, just read the announcement.
Just read the, the notice.
The notice is all you have to do.
Okay.
And if I have any questions, I can fill them in the rest.
Because I missed that on the top one, I didn't.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
What you did first is great.
All right. So notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, April eighth, uh, twenty twenty-five, at seven twenty P M. in the council chambers of the municipal building of the town of Tassel, for the known as the town, located at, uh, two hundred eleven Central Avenue, Tassel, Virginia. The Tassel Town Council will hold a public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code fifteen point two dash eight, one eight zero zero and Town Charter section two dash three zero one to provide the citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to the town's transfer of real property identified by tax map, tax map parcels and parcel numbers, zero nine four A three zero two, zero 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 eight two dash zero 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 eight three, sixteen sixteen Riverside Drive to the Industrial Economic Development Authority of the town of Tassel. Copies of the proposed, proposed deed and G I S map are available for review and inspection during normal business hours, eight A M. to four thirty P M. at the town of Tassel Municipal Building as referenced herein above. Would you might like to speak on that issue? One once, one twice. All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing and we'll reconvene at seven thirty for the regular town council meeting. All right. We'll call our regular town council meeting in order. Uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nate, if you could.
Oh, happy to, happy to. Heavenly Father, Lord, thanks so much that we can gather tonight, uh, that we get to use our, our freedom to assemble, our freedom to have comment, to be a part of the process. But thank you for our public servants, ask for our meeting to be peaceful, and that you bless us all to get home safely at the end of our meeting tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
So we're going to start out with a special presentation, Tassel County Chamber of Commerce, October event request. Your grace, come on there.
All right. Well, I guess the most, it's going to be more back there. So, uh, I guess on the, the last, last town council meeting, our group face committee, uh, made a big mistake. Made a big mistake. So we could ask, I, I guess, concerning town workers, calling me, she thought, wow, we're going to move. I had talked about moving group fest, they'll just back track. Well, there were two, myself and another member, and we call it that for a good week, we can have from just different citizens, businesses and stuff. So I'm here on behalf of the chamber to request to move fest back, just put it back.
There's a question?
Um, so sorry.
They had already filled out the application and everything, so it's, it's up for approval to let them use Main Street, um, because it is an event where alcohol is served. This has to go before council to be approved.
I'm going to question, she wanted to bring it back to me.
All right, one second. Second, any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That sounds like swag on me.
Not in room five, go on, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Juneteenth support request, uh, Mr. Jeanette Wilson.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the brand of Juneteenth and the celebration for two thousand twenty-five. We're just asking that you support our two-day celebration of the donation. We'd normally have a picnic for the whole county come, and then we have surrounding counties that come also. And we have speakers and we have music and we have poetry and we do it on Main Street. And usually, uh, we ask casual today, they have those out with the one, three. As far as having us facilitate, get an A I M. or whatever that we, we can use or want. Please ask and bring your support.
And Ms. Wilson did fill out the, the letter, sorry, the form for support. It just didn't make the town council back, but we do have it.
So is there anything huge to the event this year?
It's pretty much the same, the thing that is, a lot of our members have, uh, are, have gotten sick because they're older. And then, you know, over the while, I was asked to, one of the hot people in there also. So we're trying to continue and carry on. And, and so we're trying to get some new folks in. Right now we have like five people just working on it. But, uh, some younger people have said they would come in and help, so we're going to try to get their support also.
I know that we have a big turnout, turnout. Do you remember, okay, guys, last year, do we have an idea of how many of the numbers of people that come?
In the past, it's been anywhere from two fifty to, uh, maybe a hundred to two fifty. So we never know because a lot of the, uh, surrounding counties are starting to, to come in and join in to the plan and. and, and, uh, that ski and, and, uh, Devon McDowell and Mercer.
These are churches.
These are just different, if I faults come in to, to join in.
And last year, we did support this event in the total of three thousand dollars.
Come back for a motion for three thousand dollars.
Okay, you got a motion for three thousand?
I would like to mention that since this does go through Tassau today, I am stepping away from the discussion I've already been on this. All of the funds do pretty much come in and go out. They do not go towards any of the operating costs of Tassau today, but there is an appearance that that could be the case. So I'm stepping away from that as an employee of Tassau today.
All right, so we got a motion for a three thousand dollar donation?
My second.
You got a second? Do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, Tassel, Class of nineteen seventy three, Peak Foundation Request. Ms. Neverless.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the travel hearing. First of all, thank you for letting me attend here and speak to you all. Wanted to give you all an update of how our foundation has progressed in as little as a year. It's astounding to me. I do have classmates here that have traveled, and I would like to have them to stand up. Andy, Terry, Cherie, and Stephen. Stephen came from Adden, and Cherie, of course, is local. Terry came from the beach this morning, and then Andy, of course, is local. So we do have fellow classmates here that I think should be recognized as well. I don't know whether you all have seen this, but I wanted to share a copy of this. This is the joint resolution from the General Assembly recognizing the Class nineteen seventy three. This was given to us at the Tassau Graham Game, November the first or fourth, I believe, in twenty four. And this is your copy. We had ours framed, and I believe they're still working on it. It's a beautiful piece, but I felt like you guys need a copy, need a copy of it here. To our, to our knowledge, and we've done some research, our class has been the only class in the Commonwealth that has ever been recognized as a total class. So Tassau holds an outstanding number one again. So we've got a PowerPoint here, and I want to try to get through this for you guys. Do we, are we up with, just with air?
Yeah.
Okay, we're just going to quickly go through this. The foundation was established in two thousand and twenty three, and it was, it was created in honor of our achievements and the members of the projects like the PBS documentary and the two hundred and fifty-page-plus legacy book that will be copyrighted to the Library of Congress, and that is still in the works. And our concept is that we foster regional pride and promote sustainable community-driven solutions to modern challenges in Tassau County. And right here is where I want to add that our number one challenge in the county is opiate addiction and domestic violence associated with, with opiate addiction. The number two crisis is obesity and diabetes. That is going to lead us right into our next objective. And, well, we'll show you how we're going to tackle that issue. So, let's see. This is what we've accomplished in year, in the first year. We, we were awarded the three thousand dollars in scholarships at Tassau High School. We launched our heritage collection at Main Street Moments and the Burke's Garden Festival, which later turned in because of the hurricane, to the farmer's market. And I want to add that at our Main Street Moments Festival, we had a couple artists from the Nashville area come up. One of those artists now owns the Wayfair, or the, the building down at the Paint and Peak. So just want to show you how easily those connections can be made, and you never know what's going to happen. So just, just wanted to share that information. When the hurricane happened, we reached out to try to support the local community, and we partnered with Convoy of Hope, and they brought in a tractor trailer of supplies delivered down to Knuckles Hall, I believe. And then all of our classmates went down there, I was not there, but a whole, the whole team of people came down there and split that up between the four, four food banks in Tassau County. And so I believe that we, we helped support that, the needs of the area through that, through the relief efforts. And then in November of two thousand and twenty four, that joint resolution that I just shared with you all was given, was, we were honored at the Tassau Graham Game. And I want to tell you, that was an absolutely amazing event. They went, Rusty Hackfield actually assembled, he was the band director at some point in Tassau, on to Graham, I believe, or moved to Graham. But that came back and did a special presentation for us, music-wise. Music was an incredibly important part of our class and band was. And he came back and honored us with the fan, the joint bands, Graham and Tassau joined together on the football field to, to support and honor us, and that was very memorable. The most important thing that I think we're, we're getting ready to launch April the twenty ninth, this is partnering with Virginia Cooperative Extension Agent and Communities in Schools. And it is our Roots to Real, Throw It in a Crop Pot. And this is how we have decided that we're going to tackle or challenge the obesity and diabetes problems that we have here in the county. We're going to get into that in just a little bit, in a few more slides, but I think you'll see that this initiative is taking off and through our partnership with the communities and schools and Ella Wade at the, our nutritionist there. We wanted to open it up to maybe even more. Our homeschool is where our heart and where we want to start the initiative, but we feel like we will open it up and expand it as needed. Right away, Richlands has asked for us to come down there, but our goal is to launch this initiative by sharing with them hydroponics, showing us that that's the roots, to the real, real, real food, real health, real community, real solutions. And we feel that that combination will help us try to at least give an awareness in our first year and in this first initiative to, to, to bring awareness to, to students. We're going to give each senior that attends this program, Crop Pot, and a mixing bowl with some of the things. We feel that they're getting ready to go out to either college and/or on their own, and we wanted to get them started in at least thinking about nutrition and food awareness. So let me, I might have talked through the next slides, imagine that. I want to bring you up to date with our PBS. Now is where we want to show that video. We're working with Jacob Dillinger, who has filmed here before, and we've come up with a chapter analysis. But they did this trailer for us, and I wanted to share it with you all tonight.
Tassau High School's Centennial Class of nineteen seventy three has a story to tell. That's the way of a time, a place, and a group of people who helped shape the community. These classmates didn't just graduate from Tassau High. They spent the past fifty years minding that difference as leaders, educators, innovators, and caretakers of their hometown. With over half the class members still living in Tassau County, this remarkable retention rate speaks to a deep rooted commitment to Southwest Virginia. They built businesses, raised families, served in the military, and woven themselves into the very fabric of white gear. PBS Appalachia is producing the one-hour documentary, Tassau Class of Seventy Three, on the New Year Book. Career in June of twenty five, this special program will be available nationwide for free at pbs.org. And class members formed their peak foundation to preserve its legacy, who serve as to other hometowns. They also published a two-hundred-page book about their life experiences and lasting endurance. In a history-making event at a Bulldogs football game against the Grand G men, with band members from both schools, the Virginia General Assembly presented their first joint resolution honoring the class for its contributions to the community. Help us share the story of Tassau Class of Seventy Three on the New Year Book to inspire generations to come.
Now we're back to where we're working with Jacob on how we're going to work on that documentary. We've divided it into five chapters, which I've got here, and it's just to let you know that we're working on the script for this and how it's going to be broken up. Highlighted is the roots and upbringing, the education. Rebellion and Change, that was a big part of our upbringing. Life Beyond High School and the Legacy and Looking Forward. PBS put together a media package for us, and I talked about this shortly after we were here in August of last year, that the, the media package translates to about, this is their media package, sixty-one million viewers, which translates to us about five thousand visitors. And those numbers were driven from the Virginia Tourism Corporation and Out of Richmond. And they estimate that each visitor will spend somewhere around a hundred and fifty dollars. And, you know, I traveled from Fredericksburg, and I can say that that's a true statement. I also want to share with you that we're in conversation now with Virginia Tech, and they are going to support this documentary as well. It, where we have put a number or a tag to it, but we know that they will, that they are going to support it. So we have that. Now here's our Roots to Real and our partnerships with community and school, and I've already talked with that a little bit. But wanted, wanted to share with you all the concept and get some imagery going so that you guys will not be surprised when you see people walking around with crop pots. We have already worked with Walmart in Bluefield, was the first to support us. Walmart and Pounding Mill, and Neil Branding, who owns the trademark for Crop Pot. Throw it in a slow cooker, just doesn't quite have the punch, is throw it in the crop pot. So we, we're working with Neil Branding, they have finally reached out to us, and we're going, we're working around who is going to product support and, and the initiative altogether. We do feel that this might have some type of regional impact as well as national impact. And we don't want you to think we're going to stop at the Crop Pot. We feel like people will get tired of the same old Crop Pot recipes, so we feel that we will nurture this program and maybe next year, use an Instapot, or a Bullet, or a Walk Pod, or... There's so many ways that we can reach out to folks with, with healthy cooking that we're going to just keep the going. But this, these are our goals, and we're not sitting still, I don't think, with this. I think we, we want you to know that it's driven in not just a one-year achievement, but a multi-year drought. Here's our summary. Our goal is to raise the ninety thousand dollars for the PBS documentary. We've raised thirty thousand. The tourism impact that we have with economic development was discussed in that media package. And we feel that just the, the outreach to the April twenty ninth present, or the, the initial kickoff there, when we reached out for a fitness person, that fitness person was connected to Richlands. Richlands has also asked for it, and we, we went ahead and said, reach out to Graham, because if we can video a presentation, then we're going to allow it to all, to Richlands and Graham and anybody that watches our video, those graduating seniors, this is our first test drive. We'll, we'll pilot project, and we'll see, we'll come back and analyze it later. But we feel like to kick it off and to get the word out, we feel like those Crop Pots have to go out. They have to get in the hands of those seniors. And we're reaching out tonight for contributions, for financial support, and partnership opportunities. And we want you to keep us in mind whenever you are looking at your budget and can work with us on getting our agenda, you know, capitalized and finished. And I believe that's all I've got to say. Thank you. This is our nineteen seventy three to our fifty years of support, and we appreciate the Town of Tassau. Does anybody here want to say anything? Andy, you always have something to say. Terry?
You've done a good job, thank you for sharing.
Cherie? Steve, you've got something to say?
Always have something to say, whether it's right or not. But the, the class is, the things that's been done with this place of seventy-three, you know, it's just astronomical. People have done things. We came from a very poor upbringing, come through some hard times in sixties, seventies, and everything, and we've conquered, you know? And we're still going to conquer. This is a good thing. She started this, and I've jumped on board, proud of help and stuff. It's going to go, the train's going to leave the station. All I'm asking you to is get on board, let's go.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for all your work.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I did, we should bring up a, entertain a motion to make a resolution of support for the Class of Seventy Three and the project.
We're late. So, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we do a resolution of support, and then as we're building out our budget for this upcoming year, definitely will consider you all and look at that. We're working through the numbers right now.
Okay, well, you know I'm in a camp, and so I can heal.
And thank you for coming back two nights.
That's right, and I've got a third one tomorrow at the IDA for the Wayfair at the Academy. So, yeah, so, yeah, we're pushing through, we're pushing through.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a second, and I guess we prepare a resolution at the next month meeting. Right? Yes. So we got a, a motion and a second for preparing a resolution of support for the Class of Seventy Three. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? So we'll, we'll get something prepared, and next month, hopefully, we'll have.
I'll be working with Lee Anne to kind of drive some of them. We are working for some national, I realize that the town supports so much, but we feel like this is extremely, as, as everyone does, I think. but we feel like this is extremely, as everyone does, I think. But we are trying to work with some national sponsorship so that it will ease some of the tension here. But I think it's very important for the town to chip in and do something. And help us get this PBS documentary so we can get it off the, you know, I think we want it released maybe June, but I'm sure we're now pushing that one, pushing that envelope now forward. So, but I think it's important we get this done and then we just keep doing the crock pot and we just keep on going. And it's those one-two punches where you just keep that coming back. You can't just do something and fade away. You have to have those one-two punches that just keep going and then eventually you're recognized. You got that, Dan?
I got it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a lady.
I got it.
Okay, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is National Police Week Support Request from Ashley Fisher. And Marie?
We have received a letter saying that each year Ashley Fisher from Fisher and Company, she likes to try and show her support to all of her local law enforcement officers. She states that she has fed over a hundred and twenty local law enforcement officers. This includes the town, county, and state and institutional securities in Tazewell County and surrounding counties during National Police Week. We plan to offer this mill again May the twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. We are asking for any contribution or donation you would like to give to our law enforcement. We want every officer to leave with something in their hands today or evening. Thank you so much and events for your contribution. You have no idea how much these men and women appreciate your support. Last year we did give a donation of two hundred dollars.
Entertaining discussions?
I'll make a motion to do the same.
I second the motion.
So we got a motion for, and a second for two hundred dollar donations, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, any discussion?
I'll leave a queue for this one. It's a time, I'll pour you.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, passes. Next, we have local business recognition. We got Books Blooms and Bridges, Jessica Zalvalla, and Anna Metzger. Close? Come on up. Tell us about your business.
Hi, everybody. My birthday is Anna, my age of five, my mother named Tiffany. This is my first time here, I feel very grown up. Thank you for having me. My mother and I own a consignment shop called Books Blooms and Bridges. So I had a PowerPoint, but I didn't send it to you guys. I'm just going to go based off of my memory. I wanted to talk about the five W's with you guys. So who we are, it is my mom and myself, and my husband helps me over there. Yes, we are a local, family-owned, little new business. We opened it out a month ago. What we, what do we sell? So we have books and we have blooms and we have bridges. So books, we have newly used books. Blooms, I actually handcrafted ribbon flowers, so those are the blooms. And then bridges, so we have newly used clothing, shoes, purses, a bunch of everything really for men, women, children, anything you can try to think of. We'll probably have, who, what? When, when we are open, we are open daily, ten AM to six PM. Where we are located, we are located in one forty Railroad Avenue. It is right across from the train station here in town, directly right across it. And why should you guys shop with us or consign with us? So you want to shop with us, we are very affordable. We have affordable prices. We really give back to the community because most of our consignors are locals. So that's an aspect. If you want to consign with us, we are a fifty-fifty split, so get your money's worth. We also are very transparent and honest about our pricing, our policies. We also have a system in place where if you consign with us, we get your information and then we have an online portal? An online portal where you can see everything that you've consigned with us, how much we're listing it for, your split, anything that you've sold, anything you've not sold. So yeah, just very transparent overall. Yeah, so I just wanted to come here so you guys can hear about it, talk about it, come shop with us. So yeah, that's it.
While you're standing here, we've got.
How do you?
We always do a picture with new businesses and if anybody else would like to come up. I'm not very confident, so we'll come to the middle.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of amendments for the special calls for extension on March fourth and the regular council meeting for March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right. And next we have the approval of the financial statements and financial report for March twenty-twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, next we have committee and conference updates. Planning Commission Committee, Councilmember Dix.
So we met yesterday. We talked about a piece of property that is near the high school that we have been asked to change the zoning on it. There was an application put in. They wanted to change the zoning of the property from a conservation to residential. So that is kind of later on. It was referred up to, planning commission referred it up to council. As a part of that, there's another piece of property that actually has a residence on it that somehow is still in a conservation district as well. So we would like to change the zoning of that to a residential. So I believe Chris was getting in touch with the owners of that property to go in and get that started. There is also a piece of property on Riverside Drive that whenever we were doing our zoning districts, it, we all thought that it was in a residential zone, but apparently it got carved out. And it was in eighty-eight. It was moved from a R-two to a B-one. So we're going to be correcting the zoning map to reflect that.
Which piece is that?
It is Riversideville Raston's Old House.
And what's the person wanting to do there?
Well.
And what?
If they're not wanting to do that, it's already been done. We just have to correct the maps.
Are you asking about what they're planning to do with it or why are they wanting it done?
What they're planning to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What are they planning to do with it?
I don't know that they said anything about what they're planning to do with it.
Chan bought it and he's going to put a shop there and sell propane, refill propane tanks.
In a residential area?
It was B-one in nineteen eighty. But it also being in a B-one, B-two, M-one, you still have to go through commercial overlay district procedures. So you still have to go through.
None of it's already done?
Yes.
All commercial.
The new warrants was passed, Chris, four years, three, four years ago. To commercial overlay, development area, zoning, anything in B-one, B-two, M-one, have to go through the planning admissions regard to everything from utilities, lighting, access, you know? They have to approve, you have to present a plan. It's what you're going to do with it. They actually have the final say, the planning commission does, is what they actually do. They've got to be reasonable by course, but they do have the ability to put some types of guardrails and restrictions as to what and how. But it is, but it is, it's a B, it's a neighborhood business. It's been zoned for that for thirty-seven years.
So.
We don't have a map of that one, do we?
What's that?
We don't have a map of that one.
No, we do not.
Right across from where you turn into just period repair.
Exactly.
You want Susan to bring it up on the screen?
No.
That's okay. I can pause my question. On the property that they're wanting to, on the property that they want to rezone residential beside the high school, is it R-one, R-two?
They want to rezone it to R-one.
It fits in that area.
Everything in front, I think, is already all.
Remember I was originally zoned to a conservation? It's a concern. I'm asking.
I don't know how the house, the mustard house that I built in nineteen ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
It was just nice, I guess.
That was before our county.
The other thing we discussed was the subdivision ordinance that we have in our code. Basically this refers to what all has to be on a subdivision flat. So that has not been updated since nineteen sixty-five. And there are some things that really don't apply anymore. So Brad has asked that we allow him to review those and redraft that ordinance and then all come to court for approval. And then we just had some timeline on the physicians.
Community Foundation.
The community foundation building that is going in. We talked about a house across from.
Head Start.
Yep, Head Start that has actually come down. And we talked about the progress of Warhol Park. That's it? Yep.
Okay. So if you're talking about a house across from Head Start, which is more proper, you need to talk about the house on Tazewell Avenue that's fortunately about to fall down.
You got that, Chris?
Who you son?
I didn't know that.
Just wonder.
What, it used to be Fran's House?
No, is it right across from the Catholic Church? Is that what you're talking about?
No, no. It's about the fifth house down on the right when you turn down Tazewell Avenue.
Oh, Tazewell Avenue, I was stuck on that.
It's got two Y's.
You're talking about the Combs House.
Yes, that front porch is going to fall in.
That, she's going to get a letter from the whole house here, surely. The whole house needs to come down. They did, they did.
Okay.
That's about all they do.
You get to move on?
Move on.
All right. All right, we'll get to move on to unfinished business. Second reading of the Shipping Container Ordinance Amendment, being one use.
If you like, you can.
I will make a motion to waive the reading.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, we waived the reading, then we just have to vote on the ordinance itself.
That's correct.
We just wait. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Oh, you're doing your act, should be containers to the use.
Right.
Two words, bound. Certain things you're doing.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Next, we need to set the public hearing for charter amendment for Town Manager Residency Mileage Extension for Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five at six forty-five PM. Or, that's suggested.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
All right. Got a motion? Got a second? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And then next we need to ratify the vote in support of Virginia Housing Workforce Grant Application on behalf of Tasmoto for three twenty Main Street, Tasmoto Distort Revitalization Project.
Is this from Luke Allison?
Yes.
Can I make a motion on that?
Do it.
Because this is one that we voted by email.
Oh, we voted by email?
Yeah.
What was the? Do it, we have a motion and a.
I think Phil's never, Fox actually made the motion. I think Phil's never claimed the subject.
Okay, so we typically, you want to remake the motion?
I understand that the, he's got some houses he ran down.
The problem I have with it is you're, and yes, we're not giving money, but we're giving goods and services. And it's got a total grant, right?
Not total grant.
Not, it's not.
It's got a match.
It's not a one-to-one match, though.
So what is?
It's not match.
See, it's been the, we just took a two of thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand dollars. So if they get thirty-five thousand dollars for it, we have to match.
So they're applying for more than that. Because we're in an economically distressed area, the match is like a one-to-four ratio or something like that. It's been minutes since I've pushed out it directly. You know, this project is going to invest, two point three is what they have, two point three million dollars on Main Street to add seven, they've got six current apartments, but it's going to improve to seventeen apartments. You know, a lot of the stuff that we look at and we're looking at capturing business on Main Street, the housing's a piece of that. So also the prevention of what they call the age. So you have improved apartments on Main Street, capture more business on Main Street.
Luxury apartments, is that what they're calling it?
I don't think they're going to be luxury apartments. They are going to have, when I spoke with Jared Burton, who's a partner in that, they're going to have two veterans in that. And what they're doing is applying for several grants, including the real property investment grant to offset the cost to improve this property. My argument with it is that there's already incentives that we have in place. They ask for two things. They ask for a match on the grant so that they could go apply and save state dollars that went into Main Street. And they also ask for three years of property tax rebate. And one of the things that we've been trying to do over the course of two years now is to approach any type of incentive in an equitable fashion. So in our enterprise zone, so the Virginia enterprise zone, we have the, let's see, the, our, our.
ETV.
And that stands for rehabilitative rehabilitation. Thank you. So it's the rehabilitation. So basically there's an incentive that we already have on the works to offset the increase in property value. So property tax on eighty-six before you switch across three years. So no, I don't want to support three years of just waiting property tax on this property. But I do want to support the match because ultimately. do want to support the, uh, the match because ultimately, if you have two point three million dollars invested on your Main Street, you're gaining seventeen apartments, you're going to recoup that over time through the increase in property value. And that's my, that's my argument for supporting it. And, um, you know, there's not, there's not many real estate developers that we have in the Tasmo. I, if you think when we can use the incentives that we already have on the books to support this type of investment, it's a good opportunity. So that's the reason why I was...
Well, the reason, how more is because they bought all Mr. Harris' properties, basically. They probably got fifteen properties within the town that are empty and they will not be worked on. The old house right at the intersection, Tasewa Avenue, the apartment that sits there, it's been empty two years.
So Tasmo, from my understanding of it, they're, they are the property managers but not the owners of those properties?
But Luke is.
I don't think that's true.
He's over.
He may be over in terms of the property manager, but as far as the capital investment into those properties, I think that his, his attachment, that's what it...
If he told Jared to fix that apartment, it would get fixed.
So Jared's already put seventy thousand dollars in his own money into those apartments on Main Street, and I know that from talking to him last Wednesday because I was just walking around and saw a, uh, downtown. So you have local individuals who want to come back to our area, just like the class nineteen seventy-three, and they've positive improvements in our hometown. I think that's something that, that's worth considering, especially when you're going to recoup this money on property taxes, uh, over the next, the next seven years. If this, if properties like this go down and aren't maintained, they will not be rebuilt yet. The cost to build these structures, and if you're in the garage of that, that building, there used to be, um...
A circus.
A circus department down there. You know, just the iron beams alone that are in their facilities, like you, you're not hitting facilities like this building yet. So having two point three million dollars invested on our Main Street is something that we should look to cultivate when we can. You're going to make money.
So with that, we, we did do an email vote, the purpose here is to ratify. We had the council member Fox make the motion, the council member Lynn, for example, who said to make the second. So to ratify that vote, we typically make those motions in the same order. So would you like to?
Well, after, you know, you have to check with the councilman.
It's...
Will?
Will.
It's, it's already, it's already happened.
It's already, it's already done.
We just got to do the same thing that we did.
That's, that's what you're doing.
I'll make a motion to go ahead.
Okay, then I'll second.
All right, we already had some discussion, but all of you forward to discussion again? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay, both have been ratified.
How would we, yeah?
All right, we'll move on to new business. Uh, first reading of the card processing fees requirements, attorney Pike.
This is going to be pretty quick. Chapter ten, finance and taxation, article one in general, section ten dash seven, assessment fee for payment paid by credit card. Be it ordained by the council of town of Tasmo, Virginia pursuant to Virginia Code section fifteen point two, fourteen, twenty-seven, and town charter sections two dash two oh nine, and hereby acts the following ordinance regarding the assessment of a convenience fee for payment for services by use of a credit card. Section ten dash seven, assessment fee by, assessment fee for payment by credit card. Paragraph A, upon tender of payment by credit card by any consumer for use of services provided by the town, the town may assess against the consumer a fee of three percent charged amount in addition to the amount of cost of the service in order to reimburse the town for the maintenance and service fees it incurred when allowing payment by credit card. Paragraph B, the fee shall be collected on consumers' use of a credit card for payment by any town customer service representative or member of the town trade. Do the first reading for April the eighth, twenty twenty-five. Second read to occur May thirteenth, next town.
One second, read. Uh, next is transfer of Talon Tasmo property located at sixteen sixteen Riverside Drive, tax map number zero nine four eight three oh two, zero 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 eight two, and zero 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 eight three, to the Talon Tasmo IEDA. Attorney Pike.
Just need to add basically a motion to approve the sale along with a second and a vote, and a designation for the mayor, uh, to be able to sign the deed on behalf of the town. I'll also have a resolution prepared that reflects this vote tonight. I'll make it for signing next time, but what we need for tonight is a motion to approve a second and a vote, and that designation for the mayor as the, to sign off on the deed on behalf of the town.
The designation of the mayor is part of that motion, or is it a separate motion?
It's getting signed.
Okay.
It's one motion to approve the sale and designate the mayor to sign off on behalf of the council.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make that motion.
You got a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
You got a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Okay, pass this. And next, we need to set the public hearing for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget for Tuesday, May thirteenth, at twenty twenty-five, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, at seven P.M.
So as you all know, we've had, um, a slew of budget sessions this year, um, and we're actually going to be scheduled with one more, I believe, and we are needing to get a public hearing scheduled, May the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we, we have a few public hearings, so this one would be at seven P.M. I'll make a motion to set the public hearing at seven P.M.
Okay, you got a motion, we'll see, got a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Okay. That's set in the rule. Next, we have an option for surplus, need to read.
Usually twice a year, um, we have an opportunity with a local auction company that they will allow us to, um, put in equipment, put in vehicles, put in, uh, what have you for auction, and this auction is going to be held May the third, um, up here on Route four sixty. Um, so a little bit earlier in our budget work session, I had told you that our EMS department has two ambulances, um, so in unit nine oh five, the motor's blown, unit nine oh six, it keeps overheating and there's electrical issues. Um, one of them is a two thousand six Ford at three fifty, the other is a two thousand nine Dodge four five hundred, and she would like to be able to send those to auction. Um, from our police department, we have a Ford Explorer, year two thousand and fourteen, uh, the mileage on it is one hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-two miles. Um, we also have a Chevy Tahoe that's two thousand fourteen, mileage is one hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and five miles, and those are at end of, end of use as well. Um, there, there's pictures documenting all of these. Uh, there is also a... There is also a... I was looking, is there a...
It's a big fan.
It's a, it's a big fan. Is there any kind of like a model?
It's one of those, the day crook in here, it's huge, it's a military fan.
Corticol Jetstream two hundred and seventy van.
Does it work?
There is one that the shop uses that does work. I don't know if this one down there works since it's been a little bit, I don't know, it's a... But TJ does use, they were two, but TJ does use one in his shop.
Thinking on that one, you know, if it, if it did work, it was viable, you know, the high school team during two days might appreciate something like that.
And we have, I don't care if it donate, by no means, we just was trying to get it out of the way. So we have no use for something of that nature. It doesn't work though. And it very well may, I, I, I don't know.
So would council be okay? We'll, we'll test it out, try it, um, if it works, and we could donate in two days.
If it works, I'll reach out to, to the football coach and see if they're interested.
If not, could we approve to auction? Um, and again, this is happening in May the third.
I'll make a motion to approve the option.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? All right, motion carries. Town manager project updates. Town manager reading.
I handed you all out a little sheet to there by. I did try to shorten it, my last one was five pages, so it was just two and a half. Um, at Route four sixty, water arm replacement project. After a few months in the road, we met with Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water and provided sufficient information to them showing the town's capability of seeing the project to permission. We satisfied any concerns they had and were able to move forward along with loan, loan closing. We closed the loan March the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. We have received shipment of materials and we are in the process of getting the shipment of pipe. We anticipate beginning this project in May. Our plan is to perform the work on Finn Castle on what we call Four Way Hill, which is the hill that goes down toward Hardee's. During the summer, we will be closing the road for through traffic on Finn Castle from Finn Castle Motor and to Nationwide Insurance. We will be detouring traffic by means of Ben Bolt Avenue. Our goal is to perform this work while schools are out for the summer break and will have the road open by the first day of school so that we do not interfere with school traffic. Our wastewater treatment plant project upgrade, uh, upgrade project, sorry. On February the twenty-sixth, we held a debt opening for this project. Orders, construction came in with the lowest bid. We have not awarded this project yet because we're waiting to see if we can get additional principal forgiveness or loan funding from DEQ. Um, Thompson and Litten and Susan and I have been in pretty much constant communication with DEQ for about the last two weeks. Um, so right now, we've submitted everything that we need to, and we're waiting to hear back from them. The North Tasmo Revitalization Project, we have a preliminary report from the Hill Studio, and we were scheduled to have a meeting yesterday, however, it was canceled, and we are going to have to reschedule that. Um, the farmer's market, we have applied for a grant of two hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars from Tobacco Commission to assist with the site development and construction of the farmer's market. We have applied for a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the Coverland Forest Community Fund to assist with river access and river walk. We are also applying for an A FID grant through VDAX, which is Virginia Department of Agriculture Consumer Services. This grant was recommended by the Tobacco Commission. It is due April the thirtieth, and the max award is fifty thousand dollars. EMS Congressional Directed Spending. On March eleventh, we had engineers from Thompson and Litten at the EMS building to discuss options on how we can make necessary improvements and stay within budget for this project. The engineers toured the facility inside and out, took measurements and gathered information. We are waiting to hear back from them on their progress. Deed of transfer, transfer for IEDA and Talon Tasmo. Um, tonight, we held a public hearing. Attorney Pike has been preparing the deeds for transfer, and after votes were seen, he will now be able to move forward and proceed with the process. The I R S loan. Documents required for this project can, to continue, were due on February the twelfth. They have been signed and executed and accepted by DHCD. Additional actions needed, such as a promissory note and deed of trust, have been drafted by attorney Pike and sent to DHCD. They have just responded and approved the drafts. Once signed and executed by all parties, reimbursements can begin on the project. The project has eighteen months from the initial signing to be completed. Warhop Park. Town crews have been on the side of Warhop Park completing site development for the basketball court, two pickleball courts, and shelter site. Weather permitting, it will be paved next week. Basketball goals have been ordered and delivered. The shelter is in process of being ordered. Next will be utility hookups and installation. There has been discussion with the vocational teacher, and he has said the students can help build the shelter and the picnic tables for the shelter. Sunnyside Project, AKA The Traveler. Executive Assistant Reese has been working on an invitation for the official grand opening of The Traveler. This is a requirement of the grants that were received for the project, and we have been waiting for warmer weather. The event will take place Monday, April the twenty-eighth, at two P.M. Mountain biking project. Recently, we have been discussing using a town-owned piece of property to develop a mountain biking trail. This is on our five hundred and three acre property outright. At last month's council meeting, council voted to set aside three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in an LGIP for this project. Treasurer Hayes has submitted to create this account, and I received confirmation Friday that it has been, it has been created. She will be transferring the funds in the upcoming days. Councilmember Klein, councilmember Davis, and I attended a meeting yesterday with Tasmo County officials. We have the possibility of funding in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. We should hear back from this by the end of the month. The next steps will be obtaining railways from other property owners and preparing for procurement advertising for our company to design the trust. Do you have any questions?
Very busy.
It's very busy.
I have a question on the EM, Matt.
Yes.
So what are we looking to do there?
Um, so in twenty twenty-three, there was an application for the Congressional directed spending, and it was to improve the current structure of the building, um, such as like sleeping quarters, um, the bay for the actual ambulances was to be addressed, and so there are six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars set aside for this project. And we have discussed with the engineers whatever it was, what our needs were, and told them basically we need to get the biggest main curve up.
So you're looking a little bit there?
Yes. It was...
That's what they requested, right?
Well, it was thought that we might move this whole location, but then, being that we have six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, buy a piece of property, build it from the ground up, it was kind of presented to us that we would not have enough funds for that. So we're going to make the best of what we have.
And they also discussed the proximity of like Dogwood.
Yes.
Something about Call, are you?
Um, Mother of Christ, Dogwood Crossing is up there, and they, they do have a lot of calls.
Get a lot of traffic, what's on there too?
Am I any other comments? All right, moving on. We need to set a public hearing for rezoning of Harris Lane Properties for Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen P.M. Zoning building and property maintenance official group.
Uh, got to remember on your council packet that I gave you to hand out for the map. So Trinity Presbyterian Church owns that land in the purple line there. They put an application in on March third to rezone from, uh, C one, which is Conservation, same thing Lincolnshire Park is, to R one. They have a buyer for the property, but it's just on hold until they get this done. And, uh, got, I told the planning commission last night, I had sent, sent people to notify by certified letter, they got ten, it's just on hold. But, uh, after that, and running two newspaper ads for this public hearing gives the neighbors a chance to come and speak their mind about it and zoning changes. Just need to set that for seven fifteen for the next council.
We don't have a vote on it, we need a vote to do that, right?
We need a vote.
Okay, we need a motion to set that hearing?
Motion to set the hearing.
Got a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
You got a second? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Motion carries. And Ms. Lanius, do you have any?
I do have one thing. Um, the annual Chamber of Commerce dinner is this coming Friday at the VIP room at six o'clock. We do have a table. Um, two people have signed up, so there are still seats. If you all would like to attend, please let Susan and I need to let the chamber in as soon as possible.
You said Friday, this Friday?
This Friday at the VIP room at six o'clock. Um, well, the, the reception starts at six, dinner starts at seven.
What's the menu?
We're still working on the menu.
Why wouldn't they have to give an answer to that?
Fox, you had a comment?
Yeah, uh, I had, uh...
Yeah, uh, I had Lynn Wilson, Lynn Crab Creek Wilson.
Quillen.
Quillen.
Yeah, Quillen. Uh, they were talking to me that, she talked to you both, the manager and you, about this road. Is your road just a driveway?
So they said that as, as the property is laid out, it's, it's supposed to have a roadway all the way around. Um, it's not developed, so there, there is more or less a driveway. It is crockett drive, drive, okay. Um, but what their hope is to eventually develop other pieces of that property. And what they had asked me was, could we provide like snow removal, street maintenance for that, that strip of crockett drive that is developed?
So it's gonna be paved or anything?
I believe it's already paved.
It's like a one lane, we're talking to Harris Lane property.
No, this is, I'm a Richard, Richard.
Does the town take care of that property then?
It's not a.
Not.
V I D O. Okay.
That's every cross with the trash. You don't do.
I don't give a shit.
Present. I'm worried.
Seventeen, ten, fifteen.
I live in. Give it up, someone.
Can you check on, see what you can do?
So, okay. I know, I know where this, what was supposed to be, else was supposed to be developed back there?
There are some other parcels back there that, he said he would like to build like behind his house.
Like tiny house?
No, no, no. He did not specifically say tiny house.
Okay. So it's basically the parcel that also fronts on Philos, Philo Street?
It, it goes back that way, yes.
But it doesn't go all the way through.
No, it would, it would circle around, like make a, like a square.
It's been dedicated, never accepted in public.
Right, it's keep that back lot from being landlocked. Platters do this, they're supposed to do it, so you don't landlock any parcels.
Oh, this back lot.
That whole driveway is not being taken into the town. Bring it in the V I D O standard, you go ahead, sixteen foot of pavement, and two foot of shoulder, and two side.
It just.
It costs a lot to bring it in.
I see the two.
Okay, any more discussion on this? All right. Then we went over miscellaneous, so we have miscellaneous public comment?
You have Mr. Nick Richmond here.
Come on up, state your name and address, and we have a custom limiting your comments to three minutes. What I'll do is, I'll let you know when you hit three minutes and you finish your.
State.
Hello, town council members, and town manager, and other government capacities. My name is Nicholas Richmond, I reside on two two seven Blacksbrook Street, North Tassau, Virginia. So along with the fact, some of y'all may know that I'm a decorated Army veteran. Um, I deployed overseas to Qatar. Um, I served in all three branches of the Army, and I got an honorable discharge. I also had an academic scholarship to the University of Akron, and there I joined the nation's tenth oldest fraternity, Alpha Sigma Phi. My purpose this evening is to address two incidents that occurred March first and fourteenth, involved with police negligence, misconduct, entrapment, and impediment in my first, fourth, fifth, eighth, ninth, tenth, and fourteenth amendments that all resulted from me calling to report Betty Jo Vining Wallace breaking an E P O violation in which she was arrested a few days later for the same thing I spoke to Officer Matthew S. Period about. The police officers, Matthew S. Period, and others saw this gang at my house who was blocking the road, told him and them what happened, and I'm the only one arrested and charged with the crime. This is injustice. After my first complaint to the police chief, Chief Lambert writes back, mentions my complaint was unfounded. In parentheses, on April eighth, he called me to tell me how disappointed he was I didn't give him time. Officer Matthew S. Period had Betty Jo Vining Wallace in sight on March first. Officer Period told aggressors who I was, and told these people connected to Betty Jo Vining Wallace, my name. The same aggressors who showed up unannounced nor invited, parked in my driveway, trespassed after telling them at least ten times to do so. I have a witness, the first two refused to leave, named Macy Gail Johnson and Shalon Williams. Then Eva McDonald, Edwina Cecil, Laquita Vining, along with Betty Jo Vining Wallace showed up. Two of the six people live in North Carolina. On March fourteenth, Officer Matthew S. Period, along with Sergeant Benjamin Layton, refused to let me see a magistrate, impeded my First Amendment rights, and some other things listed in Virginia Code, such as obstruction of justice. The Sheriff's Department arranged for me to see a magistrate later that day, in which two people were charged later on. Matthew S. Period told me nothing will stick, I was wasting his time, insulted my intelligence. I've been in contact with the chief of police, however, he has not been in contact with me, nor correspondence, since this happened in the beginning of March. The only person who's been in contact with me is the town manager, and the Sheriff's Department, who, his name is Justin McConnell, who I told, and then he arranged for me to see a magistrate. Thank y'all for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to the general.
Select the council member, council comments first. Would anybody like?
I think that was his comment.
Does anybody have any council comments? Okay, I'll accept the motion now. Second, got a second, do we have any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. All right, we're adjourned.